Welcome to the first hearing of the committee's inquiry into the impact of Rozell interchange. I acknowledge the Gaddigal people of the Eora nation, the traditional custodians on the lands on which we are meeting today. I pay my respects to elders past and present and celebrate the diversity of Aboriginal peoples and their ongoing cultures and connections to the lands and waters of New South Wales. I also acknowledge and pay my respects to any Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people joining us today. My name is Kate Fairman and I am Chair of the committee. I ask everyone in the room to please turn their mobile phones to silent. Parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses in relation to the evidence they give today. However, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of the hearing. I urge witnesses to be careful about making comments to the media or to others after completing their evidence. In addition, the Legislative Council has adopted rules to provide procedural fairness for inquiry participants. I encourage committee members and witnesses to be mindful of these procedures. Welcome Ms. Shetty and Ms. De Pasqua and thank you for making the time to give evidence. I remind you both that you do not need to be sworn as you've already sworn and oath to your office as Member of Parliament. So in terms of beginning, I assume both of you have a short opening statement to make. Yep, we'll begin on my left, Ms. De Pasqua.
Can you hear me?
Yes, just make sure you've got the microphone close to your... You don't need to turn it on, it's on, it's all on, everything's on.
Thank you for the opportunity to address the inquiry today, Chair. I want to say from the outset that I'm here to represent my community. My intention is to work constructively with this committee, to work constructively with the government and the minister and Transport to get the best outcome for my constituents. Since the opening of the Rozell interchange, it has been traffic chaos in Dromone. My community has been subjected to significant congestion. We have rat running in local streets, it's simply unacceptable. There are local schools in the vicinity. There are numerous childcare centres, people walking to and from school, children out and about. We need real changes, we need real solutions. And my intention here today, along with my submission, is to offer practical solutions to this problem and to work constructively with the committee and the government to make sure that we address these issues that are currently being experienced in Dromone. I've written to the minister over 20 times on this issue about the Rozell interchange and I really want to make sure and stress today that we are able to, through this process, that the committee is able to make recommendations that address the traffic problems in Dromone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shetty.
Thank you, Chair. I too would like to thank the committee for having us here today to present our thoughts and feedback on this issue. It's obviously been incredibly impactful in the local community, in Balmain, Rozell and all of the other suburbs surrounding the Rozell interchange. Post-construction, this has been a real punch in the guts for our community. We've already put up with several years of disruption and we were all very hopeful that once this interchange opened, that we would be able to move on with our lives and that we could potentially get some benefits out of the opening of this interchange despite the fact that there was a great deal of community sentiment that this was not the right way to do traffic planning and this project would never result in positive outcomes particularly for those surrounding the interchange. We've been dealing with traffic chaos similarly to what the member for Dromone has been talking about, with rat running, with lots of local congestion. I do want to note, and particularly I know that you've been on the bus journey this morning and it has been unusually quiet today. I do want to note that there have been some improvements made. I've been meeting regularly with Transport for New South Wales bureaucrats for several months since the interchange opened in November to try and get some resolution to these issues and they have managed to make some improvements. Although the impact of these improvements that have been somewhat positive around Balmain have then had a flow-on effect to other areas like Dromone and like Anandale where we've seen the city west link be extended slightly and that has in turn pushed congestion issues back into Anandale and Johnson Street, which is an area that you wouldn't have been able to see this morning. So I do want to note that the Transport for New South Wales bureaucrats have worked hard to try and maximise the flow through this interchange. But what we haven't seen being addressed is more fundamental problems with the original design. I don't think it would take any traffic expert to know for anyone that had travelled through Rozell onto the Anzac Bridge prior to this opening, that funneling four lanes of traffic from Victoria Road into one, one-lane bottleneck was ever going to be a situation that was going to cause anything other than complete chaos for the people that are travelling that way into the city. So it's been hugely problematic. I just want to quickly acknowledge too, obviously you've all read my submission, but I want to acknowledge as well that it's not just the cars that have been, private vehicles that have been impacted by this congestion. The impacts have flowed on to the buses coming out of Balmain, which is our primary mode of transport. We don't have a train line. So buses coming from Lykart, Lilyfield, Rozell and Balmain have been impacted and caught up in this congestion, meaning that alternative options have been really challenging for the community to take up. We've seen buses that have been caught in congestion for anywhere from 20 to 40 additional minutes still in recent months. And there's been a very big pedestrian amenity impact where we've lost overpasses for pedestrians. We've lost pedestrian safety amenity. And as a result, we see still currently, when I went to visit the Traffic Management Centre myself a couple of weeks ago, people taking really risky behaviour to run across the intersection of Robert Street where the diversion is 700 metres for them to cross safely at an intersection or an underpass that would be appropriate. So while we're talking a lot about traffic congestion, I want to note that the impact has been much more broad for my community. Obviously too, we'll be talking about asbestos. That was another really dire situation when the one positive that we were looking at getting out of this interchange was some more public open green space, which was very welcome. And for that to have been interrupted within weeks of the opening of the parklands to the extent that we've only just regained some of our sporting fields and some of our pedestrian access to the parklands and much of the parkland remains closed, has been incredibly disappointing. Nothing is off the table is what the Minister for Roads told us for many months as the interchange had opened. But it has been incredibly frustrating for the community to see that beyond the shuffling around and things that the Transport Management Centre has been able to do to maximise the flow, there hasn't been a great deal of uptake in my mind and in the mind of my community about other things, structural things that could be changed and looking at things like the prioritisation of the toll traffic over the local roads. So very happy to be here and provide evidence to you today and thanks very much for having me.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to questions. I'll just ask a couple before handing over to my colleagues. Ms. Shetty, your submission makes mention, and you did in your opening statement as well, of the good work of Transport for New South Wales officials and crews, but that they appear to be constrained by government policy. Can you expand on this? What do you mean by that?
So what I've seen while I've been speaking to them is that they've been very keen to modify things like traffic signalling. They did some minor lane changes early on in the piece. But in terms of some things that I raised specifically around the time that the interchange opened at the end of last year with the traffic metering, so that's the lights that are preventing people from being able to flow freely from the local streets onto the Anzac Bridge. They're phasing the traffic to slow it down further. That is giving real priority to the traffic coming from the M4 toll tunnels. And when I raised the possibility of them investigating slowing down the toll traffic or doing something to sort of restore the balance so that the local traffic wasn't being pushed back to... Sorry, there's a bit of feedback there. So that the local traffic wasn't being pushed back in order to allow the prioritisation. That was something that I was told initially could be looked into, but then when I raised again after the school holidays in January, was taken off the table completely. So looking at things like metering further upstream as cars were entering the M4 tunnels was something we talked about being a possibility. I was told after January that that's not something that they were looking at doing, that it was around safety issues which have never been presented. That sort of information about the safety issues in the tunnel has never been presented.
And just to be clear, you've asked, requested that that safety advice be presented to you or produced?
Yes, that's right.
And that hasn't been?
Not so far.
Mr. Pasqua, I think you've got potentially, yes, in terms of traffic signals.
Thank you, Chair. Can I just add to that as well? I've also raised the issue in a meeting that I had in February with Transport for New South Wales executives as well as the representative of the minister's office and I was also told it's not possible to spread traffic flow. The reality is that in Dromone, we're also suffering from traffic light signalling and I've explicitly stated that in my key recommendations in my submission. We need to look at traffic light signalling at key intersections along, or that crossover with Victoria Road in Dromone. And the only way really that can be done is if we spread flow. Because right now, what it seems Transport for New South Wales are doing is holding traffic back in local streets to make Victoria Road look like it's flowing, but all the impacts are being felt in those local streets.
Well, today when we travelled down Victoria Road and we were looking at Victoria Road, it was like a ghost road. If you could explain a road like that, there was, you could have had a street festival on there and not bothered blocking off traffic. It was so quiet. But you're saying that the congestion is very much in the side roads?
Yeah, absolutely. And that's certainly what my community has said as well. It is about getting on to Victoria Road. So we've also been told by Transport for New South Wales that there is no change to the way in which people, or the time in commuting, commuting time. But that's simply not the case and that's not what we are hearing from our constituents. Our constituents are telling us. And I'm very happy to take the committee down to Dromone, perhaps after the school holidays, because I do note that the school holidays are coming up in a couple of days. So that may have impacted why, you know, we've seen less traffic perhaps this morning. But I'm very happy to take the committee down and to meet with my community to show you what it is like in the morning. It is chaos. We have people using rat runs, local streets, to try and get through and funnel on to Victoria Road because they simply can't get on there. They've stopped traffic, they've created a situation where traffic light sequencing means that people from the eastern side of Dromone can't cross Victoria Road. Not everybody is going eastbound to the city, they just can't get on. I think it's about two or three cars that can get through the lights now when perhaps before it was six or seven. So we can see that that's going to have an impact, particularly on the eastern side of a peninsula where there are only limited intersections, where you can cross through Victoria Road and over to Dromone. It's a significant problem on the eastern and the western side of Dromone. Very happy to take you down to show you what it's like and the practical ways in which this is affecting the community.
Thank you, thank you. We'll come back for a second round of questions, but I'll go to Ms. Natalie Wood from the opposition.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you both for your submission and the time and your advocacy for your communities. And I note that both of your submissions are very constructive and you've put recommendations in there about solutions for this. So we're very appreciative of that as local members, you know, you know best. So I just wanted to go to the traffic light sequencing, particularly maybe Mr. Pasqua just on yours to start with. And you've spoken about that. And I understand from your submission that you're talking about this area, people living in these streets. It's a peninsula, so there's nowhere else for them to go. Can you just expand on that briefly and then I'll ask more generally about the submission?
Yeah, so I can refer you to my submission where I've made the recommendation to review traffic light sequencing at key intersections along Victoria Road and I'll name them. That's Lyons Road, Edwin Street, Day and Park Avenue. Particularly Park Avenue, that's one where in the morning, it's been reported to me and I've seen it myself. I've actually gone down there. If you stand there, it's one of the last intersections before the Iron Cove Bridge. If you stand there and you look towards Dromone, there is a sea of black log traffic congestion. Then if you look on the other side of the road, which is the Iron Cove Bridge, it is essentially clear. So when we talk about moving the problem away, that's what's happened. It's essentially pushed the problem to Dromone and created this significant congestion and backlog issues. So that's why we need to look at those key intersections. We need to talk about, well, I think Transport needs to assess how people are getting out of their community, which they cannot do and out of their suburb at the moment. Particularly in the morning peak, it is very difficult to cross Victoria Road and that's why we need to look at those key intersections to improve flow.
So your point is, if I'm to understand that correctly, it's not just about getting into the city, it's about moving around your, both your electorates and actually getting across your local area as well as into the cities?
That's right.
Okay. And can I just go to, I think you mentioned about engagement. I think you've both sought to engage with Transport for New South Wales. You mentioned some meetings that you've had. Mr. Pasqua, could you just expand on that and the opportunities for your community to have their say directly with Transport for New South Wales, so they can hear from the community?
Yeah, I look very happy to answer this question. I first wrote to the minister on the 1st of December asking for a community meeting. In that letter, I actually relayed an invitation and said that my office would be very, very happy to facilitate a meeting. I didn't get a response back until, a written response back until March. And that was after a meeting had been organised with what seems like the minister's office and senior Transport executives and a Labor councillor. I wasn't invited to the meeting, I wasn't told about the meeting, I was told about the meeting because of my community. It was held on a Monday evening at a pub upstairs where there are no lifts. I'm not saying that we shouldn't have had that meeting, we absolutely should have. I think it should have come way sooner. I certainly put the invitation out there and wanted to work with the community and the minister's office. I raised it again at our meeting in February with Transport and a representative of the minister's office and we were told, no, there's no opportunity for a community meeting. And then in March, we had one. So I think from the outset, we need to improve communication with our community. When requests for community meetings are made, they should be considered, not from a political perspective, but because it's a community, it's an important way for our community to communicate with Transport for New South Wales. And the communication there has definitely been lacking. It feels like it's falling on deaf ears. Every time we raise it, we raise traffic light signalling, we raise issues with flow in Victoria Road and things like looking at reviewing the second bus lane at Rozell. We've raised those issues and it just feels like it falls on deaf ears every single time.
Is there an explanation why, and I'm not being political, I see you both want to be constructive. Was there an explanation why a Labor councillor can get a meeting and you weren't informed when you'd asked about it? Is there a way forward to have a community, well, is there a way forward to have a community meeting where both of your communities can be heard directly, given the efforts you've gone to? I mean, or are you just getting no response?
Look, I hope so, but out of a community meeting needs to come real action. We had a community meeting on the 18th of March, where is the action? We told Transport executives that we need to look at traffic light sequencing. Is that happening? I'm not sure, but that's what needs to happen. It's not about, look, I'm very happy that there was an opportunity for the community to address, to address Transport for New South Wales executives and I welcome that opportunity, absolutely. But what I'm saying is, it should have happened months and months and months ago. It should have happened when this all started. And in future, if we're going to take lessons out of this, well, we need to know that as community representatives, that when we ask for a community meeting, not only is it considered, but it's actioned and it's actioned in a way that allows everybody to participate. I mean, if we had the council on board, we could have livestreamed it, we could have had an opportunity for those, you know, that perhaps cannot make it upstairs to a pub to attend. It could have been in a central area like the council chambers. My office was very, very happy to organise a community meeting. All of that aside, what we're here about today is to make sure we get some real solutions for Dromone because it is a traffic and a safety issue and something needs to be done.
I can see you both trying to be constructive in your recommendations, so.
We can come back with other questions from the government.
Thank you both for your submissions for your appearance today. I will have to ask Ms. De Pasqua about the proposal around the traffic light sequencing. So, I mean, I'm familiar with Lyons Road and Day Street and Park Avenue. They are, they're all narrow streets. To what extent do you think this is just a product of development on the eastern side of Dromone where the population is actually growing and the capacity of those narrow roads to accommodate the traffic volumes?
Anthony, can you just pull the...
Sorry. Is quite constrained. Do you think that's a factor?
Thank you, Mr. De Adam. That is a factor and that's absolutely why we need to address this. And we need to address it soon because we know that there may be future development in that area. We know that's the government policy to uplift and have more population, encourage population growth. So that's absolutely why we need to be looking at this. We can't be funneling traffic into local streets like what is occurring. What has actually happened since we've opened the Rozell interchange is that we've actually created these scenarios where people are using Dromone streets to rat run when they should be on Victoria Road. We even see situations where navigation apps are telling people to, you know, make a left and go through a backstreet in order to avoid the traffic gridlock on Victoria Road. And I note that my colleague, the member for Balmain, is nodding her head because I know that she's feeling the same, or she's getting the same feedback from her community. It's a very complex issue, but it needs to be solved.
So if you adjusted the signalling sequencing, so isn't that just shifting the problem back on to Victoria Road? Ultimately, that's going to create further delays as more traffic goes through. The longer the delays, you're going to end up with more of a congestion problem on Victoria Road.
Part of the problem is that people cannot get out of the peninsula. Not everybody is going eastbound onto Victoria Road. They're actually heading across Victoria Road to get into the western part of Dromone and vice versa. And that makes it really difficult because there is a lot of backlog. So people just cannot get out of their suburb.
If I can add to that just briefly, I think part of the reason that we're seeing the shifting around of congestion is because of the bottleneck that's been created by the Rozell interchange where Victoria Road's joining the Anzac Bridge. So that's causing congestion issues. That is meaning that Transport for New South Wales have to try and spread the pain around because the prioritisation of the toll traffic means that we now only have one lane feeding from Victoria Road onto the Anzac Bridge and that is causing problems downstream.
That's absolutely the problem. That one lane after the Iron Cove Bridge is actually contributing to this whole problem. It's why you're seeing the lights at Park Avenue hold everybody in Dromone rather than spreading it across because there is only one lane. And I've actually included that in my submission because it is a problem. And we know it's a problem in Balmain and it's a problem in Dromone as well.
So I think, Ms. Shetty, in your submission, you talk about trying to encourage public transport mode shift. To what extent do you think that will alleviate the traffic volumes on Victoria Road?
I think people have been keen to try and find alternatives to get to work when they know that getting in their car is going to see them potentially taking an hour to get to the city. But unfortunately, for the people that travel from the Balmain Peninsula, there's the 441 and 442 bus. That travels down Robert Street where your bus came this morning into the interchange through that single lane merge where the bus lane merges with the private vehicle traffic and then on to the Anzac Bridge. But further to that, once that single lane merge joins up to the Anzac Bridge, it merges again with all of the single lane of traffic that has been funnelled from Anandale and the city west link. So we're seeing essentially all of the local traffic being squeezed into a very small space, impacting those 441 and 442 buses and impacting the 437 bus that comes on to the city west link and heads into the city. So people are keen to mode shift, they're also keen to be able to ride their bikes safely. But what we've seen is actually a decrease in safety around the design of the interchange. There's been some improvements with the opening of the Rozell parklands, which haven't been available until the last couple of weeks when part of those have reopened for active transport links from the Lilyfield side where people can actually travel more safely through the parklands and underneath Victoria Road onto the Anzac Bridge. But unfortunately for people travelling on to the Anzac Bridge from the peninsula, there's a very narrow, very unsafe footpath that's a shared path that's been created with a post in the middle of it. And you would think that when we're creating these new road projects, there would be a good opportunity to make sure at the very least that the active transport, cycleways and pedestrian infrastructure is improved, not detracted from. And what we've seen is quite the opposite. So unfortunately, it's been made worse, I would say, rather than better.
Can I just jump in with a question, we're talking about public transport, just about the ferries as well? Because both of your submissions mention the ferries, the need for additional stop, the fact that the ferries are full and so they're not stopping at all as well. So could you both comment on that as well?
Yeah, sure. So we've, there's been a commitment from the government to introduce another stop on the Blackwater Bay route ferry that goes from Glebe to Glebe across to Broangaroo. We would really welcome that stop in Anandale. What we've got at the moment is there's no direct bus routes from Anandale into the city. They go a very circuitous way or they go via Parramatta Road and so they're slow, which means a lot of people choose to commute in their cars because it's just so much quicker. It's, you know, 15, it was 15 minutes prior to the interchange opening and it can take sometimes around an hour to get there on public transport. So we would really like to see that Anandale ferry stop opened as soon as possible. Similarly, there's been a commitment for the West Balmain Ferry Service to reopen. There was formerly a stop there, there is still a wharf. We'd really like to see the government expedite that so that people have got real alternatives to get off the Balmain Peninsula, which is challenging in a similar way to Dromone because people don't have another way out and from Anandale where there's a dearth really of public transport options to get into the city directly.
Mr. Pasqua, can I ask you about that? I'm assuming that east Dromone area is also serviced by a ferry service. I think there was a ferry wharf at Birkenhead. Have you made representations around that issue?
I have.
Do you think that's a solution in terms of trying to get, you know, fewer vehicles coming out of that east Dromone area on to Victoria Road?
Absolutely, it should be some, all options should be on the table to address this and we do want, where possible, people to mode shift and take public transport. And part of that is about developing a service that is convenient and reliable for commuters. So in my submission, I did mention the idea of restoring the Birkenhead Point ferry wharf.
Have you written to the minister about that previously?
It's in my submission.
Yeah, have you written, is this an issue that's...
I have written to the minister on this.
At this point, you're raising it or is this something that you've had?
No, no, I have written to the minister, obviously I'm happy to provide that correspondence at a later date if you like. I have written to the minister on this. And I've also written to the minister and met with her about services in Dromone and particularly for the Dromone ferry wharf that's currently part of the F3 Parramatta River route. Now, what happens is, Dromone is one of the last stops on that route and essentially because they get full earlier in the river, once they get to Dromone, Dromone commuters cannot get on and it's a particular problem in the weekends. We fought hard, I went and had a meeting with the minister last year about this issue and we were thankful for the introduction of new services, seven every weekday. And I think it's 26 on weekends, but people are still being left on the ferry wharf. I get an email, I get emails every single weekend that people have been left abandoned on ferry wharves. So it is a problem. I've also raised with the minister the possibility of starting services further down the river, such as Cabarita or Abbotsford, to give Dromone commuters a chance to get on the ferry wharf. That is part of the problem. People are left with no alternatives. And once you're down at Dromone ferry wharf, it's a long way uphill to get a bus. So most people just get in their cars and commute. And then when you talk about a weekend, you've also got the added complexity of Birkenhead Point Shopping Centre and the, how would we call it, the complexity traffic volumes that come to and from that centre. So there is a lot of complicated flow-on effects and it's all affecting what is happening on Victoria Road and the congestion and rat running that we're seeing on local streets in Dromone. So it is a complex problem. Very happy to sit down and work through it.
I think there's a proposal from, I think, the Chamber of Commerce around using parking capacity at Birkenhead. Can you offer some comment about that?
As in using parking capacity for...
Yeah, Birkenhead Point, there's, the shopping centre's got parking capacity that during weekdays, it's not particularly well utilised and it might be an opportunity to kind of intersect with enhanced public transport. Can you have any comments about that?
Oh, look, it's something that should absolutely be on the table and very happy to, out of this process, meet with Birkenhead Shopping Centre to talk about it. I've had a meeting with Birkenhead, they are aware of the traffic issues. We all know, I've had many dealings on council with Birkenhead traffic because of the traffic that it creates particularly on a weekend. But absolutely, if we can look at putting people there and encouraging public transport use, absolutely, we should be looking at that. But it doesn't solve the issue of people that are unable to get out of their suburb. So we need to look at the traffic light signalling to get people across and able to flow in and out of their suburb because right now, it's really difficult. There are rat runs, that's what my community is telling me. People are driving erratically in narrow streets. It is just an accident waiting to happen and something needs to be done.
Thank you. We might just go to another round now. Ms. Shetty, do you think that it was known during the design of Rozell interchange, that the approval process, that there would be, as a result of this, the construction of this motorway and interchange, the result would be the impacts that are now being felt in the side roads? Was it something that was outlined, laid out for everybody? The government knew it was going to happen and it was approved anyway? I mean, a lot of people have been saying, how the hell has this happened? Who approved it? Who approved it? Do you know the answer to that?
I find it very hard to believe that anyone that was looking at the design here could have thought that all of those roads could be funnelled into these single lane bottlenecks without the severe impact that we've seen. There was not a great deal of communication about the single lane, particularly where Victoria Road joins the Anzac Bridge. We had some, there were some graphics and things that were done to demonstrate to people how to drive through the tunnels, including the Iron Cove link. But there was no information provided to people that that single lane merge point would be what we were left to deal with coming from Victoria Road onto the Anzac Bridge. The City West Link was actually reduced to a single lane a few weeks before the interchange was opened. And I wrote to the Roads Minister proactively as soon as I realised that that was potentially the design that we were going to be left with in perpetuity, to say that this is going to cause severe traffic impacts going forward if this is the plan. But little did we know at that stage that that was also what was going to be done on Victoria Road. So I think it's really clear to anyone that was doing any modelling that there was going to be severe impacts. And it's been incredibly disappointing and frustrating for the community to have not had this explained in advance. And I think it's going to take a great deal of time for there to be trust rebuilt between the government and Transport for New South Wales and our community, that decisions are being made to actually do something about this mess. It seems that the message coming from the government, now that transport has done what they can, is to suck it up. We've got to wait until 2028, when the Western Harbour Tunnel opens. Another toll road will solve this problem and we just need to deal with what we've been left with.
That was my next question, actually. Have you been informed that really, Transport for New South Wales has put in place every measure they can to best alleviate the congestion that's being felt in those local streets? They've done everything they can and that there's no other solution?
That is certainly the message that I've been getting from Transport for New South Wales. And that's why I'm here to talk about the need for government intervention. We need bold design decisions to be made about the design of this interchange and what can be done. And given the billions of dollars that have been spent creating this interchange that will just feed money into the pockets of a private tollway company, it's important that if there are solutions that might cost a little bit of money, that those are fleshed out because it might be a design change that's needed. And we were told initially that nothing was off the table. But when I've talked about design changes, they are certainly not on the table at the moment.
I would echo those comments from my colleague. Absolutely, every option needs to be on the table, considering, you know, have we had a comprehensive traffic study? Is that something Transport for New South Wales is looking at? Is that something the government will commit to? In my, or at least in my knowledge, I don't believe a recent traffic study has been done that is comprehensive and looks at the issues holistically. I certainly think that needs to happen if we're going to be serious about real and implementable solutions. If the Western Harbour Tunnel is what's going to help and alleviate this situation, well, that's, how far away is that? Three to five years? People cannot continue living the way that they are, affected by traffic in the way that they are in Dromoein and in suburbs represented by my colleague here. We need to do something about it. We're here to address this inquiry. We are here to help as much as possible to make sure we are able to identify ways we can make this better. And we're willing to work constructively with the government on this.
I mean, it sounds like your communities have been made the sacrificial lambs for transurbans' projects and for transurbans' profits. Would that be a fair statement?
I mean, certainly from our perspective, that's the community sentiment at the moment. There doesn't seem to be, there doesn't seem to be a great deal of interest in resolving the problems to the extent that they need to be fixed. And I can't stress enough what this community has been through with the construction. And we're not looking just at the traffic impact, but the other changes around the interchange have had a significant impact on people's lives. There's someone who lives in Annandale, where the new M8 exit comes out onto the City West Link. There was never previously a set of traffic lights in that location. Now there's traffic lights there. They're dealing with everything that comes with the congestion around the traffic lights, honking, emergency sirens that have to be turned on when people are driving past that lane. There's noise barriers that were constructed a long time ago to try and alleviate some of those noise issues for the residents of Annandale along the railway parade section that are past, they're used by date. They're not working sufficiently for the new introduced traffic issues that have come about because of this fundamental design change that's been so incredibly impactful. So it's not just that we're all stuck in our suburbs and stuck in our cars or buses, trying to get out, trying to get to work, trying to get the kids to school. We're actually seeing these broad implications where people are not safe crossing the road, people are not safe getting on their bicycles, and people are dealing with noise and congestion around their homes that they've never had to deal with before.
Well, it's amenity. I would absolutely agree with that. The impacts on amenity are significant. I've also spoken to residents in Runwick Street, Dromoein, Alexandra Street, Dromoein, that just cannot get out of their driveways because of the traffic congestion and the rat running that is occurring. I've spoken to people with genuine concerns about the fact that if they need in an emergency an ambulance, an ambulance would struggle to navigate through the complex traffic situation there, where you've got narrow streets and cars backing up everywhere. It is a real problem. It's an amenity issue for our community. And Victoria Road in Dromoein is just a, well, now is being treated as just a way to funnel traffic. And the traffic congestion is immense.
Thank you. We'll go to questions by Ms Warden and I'll throw to Dr Kane.
Thank you both. And again, appreciating the way you've been very constructive in your recommendations and your attempts to engage. Like I said, I just want to go to two things. Firstly, I don't want to pre-empt what Transport for New South Wales will say, but it seems that some of the narrative has been around driver perception and drivers adjusting and drivers getting used to the new kind of arrangements and some of that sort of narrative. What do you sort of say, what do you say to that in terms of resolving the problems and that kind of approach? What's your response to that?
I've read the correspondence, particularly the correspondence that comes from the Parliamentary Secretary that says something along the lines of, well, six months are needed for drivers to get themselves acquainted with the new road network and the new conditions. Well, we're now almost five months, well, I think we're in our fifth month now. That's simply not acceptable. It's more than just about drivers getting themselves acquainted with the new road. It's a sincere lack of communication by Transport for New South Wales. I just want to place on record that I had no briefing before the Rozell Interchange opened. And in fact, what made it worse is that I had a senior communications employee from Transport contact me on Monday, the Monday after the opening, to say Rozell Interchange opens on Sunday, the 26th of November, a day after. Had we been included and consulted with, we could have spread the message out to our community. That opportunity wasn't given to us. And part of the problem here, I think, is that, well, at least in Dromoein, the feeling is that our requests are being met with deaf ears. Nobody seems to be listening. We had Transport for New South Wales executives come and address our community at that community meeting, and they were trying to convince us the travel times haven't changed. We'll try and, you know, you can't say that to 150 people that have showed up to a community meeting at late notice if there was no problem. There is absolutely a problem. Tell that to the people that spend 45 minutes just trying to get onto Victoria Road, let alone trying to navigate the traffic through Victoria Road. Communication is a key flaw here and lessons need to be learned from this debacle.
I think part of the problem there is that Transport for New South Wales are measuring the time that it's taking to travel down Victoria Road, but not looking in more detail at the surrounding streets and those impacts. So what the member for Dromoein has been talking about is people trying to get onto Victoria Road. What we're seeing around Annandale, Lilyfield, Rozell and Balmain is that people are getting stuck in other places that may not be monitored. And it's that time to actually get onto those arterial roads that are causing the problem.
Thank you. They're excellent points. I just wanted to come to that. Just quickly, and the suggestion about monitoring and the suggestion that you've made to have a comprehensive local traffic study. Can I just come back to that and how that might be a way to take into account those local roads and those people trying to merely get out of their driveway for wherever they're going? Do you want to just expand on that and whether you support that?
That would certainly be a welcome thing for my community so that we can really understand in great detail what is going on on the ground. We're also seeing Transport for New South Wales recommending that people leave earlier or later to miss the peak times or that they use Parramatta Road as an alternative, which is longer, is less convenient and is pushing the problem elsewhere.
Get your kids to school at 7am. Yeah, Mr Pasqua.
Yeah, I was just gonna, I totally agree with my colleague here. You know, if we are going to go down the route of having a traffic study, well, we need to have immediate and implementable traffic mitigation strategies. That should be the key in this traffic study. I mean, I've made some recommendations in my submission, things like reviewing traffic light sequencing, which we've spoken about, reviewing, you know, that section, particularly after the Iron Cove Bridge up to the Anzac Bridge on Victoria Road. We need to look at that section there. Certainly, the anecdotal evidence is that the two bus lanes cause a lot of traffic. And from, I guess, from anecdotal evidence that my community have told me, people that use the bus service, particularly the Bendy buses, cannot manoeuvre through the second bus lane. And so just stick to the one or basically drive in between both. So we've got to look at it. Absolutely agree that bus prioritisation must take place, but we have to look at it holistically. And part of that is the left-hand turn up at Darling Street from what everyone has told me. My community have told me, most people use the Terry Street left-hand, but they don't go up and use the dedicated Darling Street turn. So maybe we can look at a way of shifting the intersection there. And I have made recommendations about that in my submission.
Maybe a meeting, not in a pub upstairs, but where people can access it.
Two questions from Dr Kane now.
Thank you very much. Thank you both very much for your submissions and your evidence today and the recommendations, which obviously come from a connection with concerns of the community. I just wanted to go back to some evidence given by you, Ms Shetty, but give Mr Pasqua a chance to respond. Ms Shetty, you noted concerns about the tolling arrangements and the involvement of transurban. And, Mr Pasqua, you were nodding along during Ms Shetty's evidence. And I just wondered if you could perhaps put on record if, you know, your views on the tolling arrangements and the involvement of transurban. Just because you were nodding, I just wanted to give you the opportunity to have a say on that.
Thank you. I've nodded with a lot of the points raised by my colleague because we have many similar, or we are experiencing the same issues. Our communities are experiencing the same issues. But this is about finding solutions and that's why I'm here. I want to find solutions for my community.
Sorry, if I could just, in the words of my colleagues during budget estimates, redirect you to my question, which is about any views or any representations you have made about concerns the community have raised, indeed in some of the submissions about the tolling arrangements?
Well, if you, I'll take you to my submission, where I actually talk about spreading traffic flows, including those coming onto the Anzac Bridge, particularly in peak periods. That would be, we need to look at all entry points to the Anzac Bridge.
Okay, so no comment. Sorry.
Sorry, I was just going to ask about the, so obviously, there's some hard structural problems with the design. It seems that the proposed solution is actually the Western Harbour Tunnel. Ms Shetty, do you support the Western Harbour Tunnel project?
Look, it's not something that we've been particularly supportive of. The community is pretty clear that we don't think building more toll roads is something that's going to solve congestion issues. It certainly induces traffic to build more toll roads rather than focusing your transport budgets on spending money on active and public transport. So it's not a project that we've been supportive of, no.
So you don't support the Western Harbour Tunnel?
Look, it's going ahead. So at this point, that is the excuse that's being used for us to just wait until that happens so that that's going to resolve these congestion issues. But it's not a project that we had supported in the past.
I think both of you have suggested that there be metering put on the main connection from the M4 connection. That's obviously going to lead to delays for those motorists coming from Western Sydney who have got much longer journey times. What do you say to those motorists about why the interests of your community should be prioritised over their interests?
What we've seen is a significant increase, improvement rather, in the travel time from those western suburbs. And we've even seen speed limit increases to try and further improve the time that's taken from the western suburbs into the Anzac Bridge. Now, I'm not asking for the government to make it really difficult for people to get in from the western suburbs. But I think if you can maybe slow that down by a few minutes in order to regain some balance so that local people aren't left in their local streets, trapped in places where essentially there are no alternatives, that that's something that bears consideration. And it was certainly something that I was assured was being considered when the interchange first opened and then something that was quickly taken off the table when I raised it again in January. So I don't want to see commuters from the western suburbs paying the price, but they have had significant improvements already to their journey time. We need to get the balance right and make sure that we're not saving people coming from Western Sydney five minutes. And in the impact that's felt from that is people in the inner west and surrounding the Rozell Interchange copying a half an hour delay to their travel time.
Thank you. We've actually run out of time, yes, for this session. And to keep things rolling along, we'll finish this session. Thanks so much for doing today and for the work you have done.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. The committee will be in touch if there's anything in relation to supplementary questions for you. We'll call our next witnesses, which is Inner West Council and City of Canada Bay. We'll begin by getting you all sworn in. We'll start with at my left, Mr Darcy Byrne. If you could please state your name, position, title in either an oath or an affirmation, which I understand you've all got those words in front of you.
Thank you very much, Chair. Darcy Byrne, Mayor of the Inner West Council. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you so much. Mr Banfield.
Kendall Banfield, Senior Strategic Transport Planner, Inner West Council.
And the oath or affirmation?
Yep.
Thank you.
I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given shall, by me, shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thanks so much. Now, Mr Megna.
Yes, Michael Megna, Mayor of the City of Canada Bay. I'll take the oath. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you. Now, no doubt, you both have short opening statements to make. Who's doing that for Inner West?
I will.
Mr Byrne, go ahead.
Thanks very much, Chair. Appreciate the opportunity to come along today and talk about the debacle that has been the Rozell Interchange. And I think it's important that everybody understand just how prolonged the impacts have been during the planning and construction phases of Westconnex. And that's the reason that our community is so frustrated that, having finally got to the end of the construction phase, that the benefits that were promised in terms of improved travel times have not materialised. Our experience throughout the last decade or more with the planning of the Westconnex project has been really terrible. There were several, just to go back to the beginning, there were several hundred homes that were lost in Haverfield and in St Peters. And as the project has progressed across the inner west, really, all of the most impactful construction impacts in terms of noise, in terms of loss of homes, in terms of drilling and so on, the inner west has been the epicentre of that. And we'd been promised that when the interchange was completed, that there would be an improved road network. In fact, we were told that traffic volumes were going to be reduced on Victoria Road by up to 50%. So we were promised Nirvana, but all we've got is a tunnel to a traffic jam and a park full of asbestos. And what we want now is for this committee to consider what surgical interventions are needed to fix the Rozell Interchange. Transport for New South Wales has undertaken a range of mitigations and the situation has improved a little bit. But what we need is a surgical intervention. Mitigations on the Rozell Interchange are like offering someone vitamin pills when what they need is a triple bypass. And we can't wait five years for the Western Harbour Tunnel to open. And we can't wait five years for the Western Harbour Tunnel to open. We've still got tens of thousands of people across the region who are not able to get to work each morning because this motorway interchange is not functioning. Lastly, I just want to say that I hope that your considerations will include the role of transurban, John Holland and CPB in this debacle. Gee, they've done well out of it. John Holland and CPB made a fortune out of the construction. Transurban have now got a monopoly over the motorway and the motorway network in Sydney. We're playing the highest tolls of any city in the world. And in fact, transurban have probably done well out of the fact that the interchange has been so poor, because everyone's being pressured and directed into the tunnels that they're making money out of. And there's got to be a lesson learnt out of this, that building more motorways simply because they can be flogged off as soon as you finish building them is not a solution to transport in a global city like Sydney.
Thank you, Mr Byrne. Mr Megna.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Since the opening of the Rozell Interchange, for up to four hours a day, the Dromoein Peninsula, its community, its businesses and its people are brought to a standstill. Canada Bay feels it every morning and every afternoon as their quiet neighbourhood streets transform into frantic rat-running arteries. Commuters face the choice of either creeping along Victoria Road through the Dromoein Peninsula, or turning off the main artery and taking suburban streets to get to work on time. Cars speed down quiet streets, commuters deliberately drive the wrong way down one-way streets, they run red lights to cut through intersections that allow one car per sequence to turn back onto the main road. For residents, crossing roads and walking kids to school has become a daunting task. What were once 10-minute journeys in the car around our LGA have become odysseys. Residents in what were once quiet streets can't even get out of their driveways due to a conga line of cars choking their streets. The Band-Aid solution, after initial public outcry, was to amend traffic light sequencing to ease congestion in Rozell and Balmain, which holds back traffic in Dromoein so as to ease congestion at the Anzac Bridge. This is just kicking the can down the road, shifting traffic further west and creating enormous problems in our area. The Premier has said publicly that the answer is the opening of the Western Harbour Tunnel in four years' time, so is our community expected to put up with this mess for another four years or longer? So we'd like to know, who did the modelling for this interchange? How did they get it so wrong? Are these the same people who are now telling the current government that it will all get better with a new Western Harbour Tunnel, which won't open for another four or more years? At a recent public meeting that was alluded to earlier, I attended, the department confirmed that until the new tunnel opens, there are no real solutions available to them. At that meeting, a senior transport official told us to leave five minutes early or five minutes later, or try a different route into the city. So he obviously had no idea that five minutes either side won't fix a 45-minute commute problem, which used to be a 15 to 20-minute commute, and take a different route. Now, which one? An already congested lines road, which takes us into an already congested Great North Road into Five Dock, which takes us into an already congested Parramatta Road? Or take a ferry that is already full from the time that it hits Canada Bay, full from up the river? Broadly speaking, the issues can be broken down into the following categories: community safety, congestion on local roads, rat-running, impact on local business. Whilst some may see the Rozell Interchange as a Victoria Road problem, in reality, along the Dromoein Peninsula alone, there are kilometres of local streets experiencing these issues, and the congestion is backed up beyond Dromoein to Five Dock and throughout the LGA. At our recent meeting with Transport for New South Wales, it was made clear to us that the department's expectation is that council will need to implement local traffic management plans to address the congestion issues caused by the Rozell Interchange. So does that mean that the state government's problem has now become council's problem? At our cost financially, to repair the damage to our local streets and to the amenity of our neighbourhoods. Sorry, but transport and the government have broken it, they own it, they need to fix it. The expectation is that we are going to get lumped with providing solutions, that we will take on the financial burden of the degradation of our roads, and that we will be responsible for the installation of safety mechanisms on our local streets, redirecting our resources, both physical and financial, to fix the problems caused by this inadequate planning. Also, at the same time, the government proposes changes to planning mechanisms that would see thousands more dwellings in Dromoein, which is thousands more cars, thousands more people trying to get to work. Our community is angry, but they welcome this inquiry into the mess that is the Rozell Interchange, but they will not merely sit back and be told that the issues will be fixed by the delivery of yet another tunnel in however many years' time. It needs to be fixed, and it needs to be fixed now. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr Megna. I was hoping as well that we would be able to have a copy of your opening statement. You didn't have, you didn't read anything, Mr Byrne. For the purposes of hands, that would be very useful, thank you. I was interested, just in terms of Inner West Council's submission, the analysis that you did around the way in which the modelling, traffic modelling appeared to be undertaken to justify West Connects at the early days, and your submission suggests that, like, it was known the whole way along that West Connects would induce demand, West Connects would create more traffic. Is that kind of essentially what your argument?
I might.
Yes, to the traffic expert, Mr Banfield.
Yeah, yes, we are. And as we pointed out in the submission, induced traffic was modelled, although we believe it was underestimated, and we pointed that out in the submission.
So, West Connects comes for, they say, we've got a solution here, or we're going to build this motorway that is going to produce more traffic. Yet, Mr Byrne, you're arguing that the public was also promised that traffic would reduce in particular areas. It just seems that there's mixed messages in terms of what this was going to deliver for the community, but it's certainly the case that it has created so much more traffic in suburb, many of the inner suburbs of Sydney, Inner West.
The former government said so frequently that traffic was going to be reduced by 50% on Victoria Road, that when, after the government changed and we got a briefing from Transport for New South Wales, I was very eager to hear about this boulevard that was going to be created on Victoria Road, and the advice we then received was, no, it's not going to be reduced by 50%. In fact, they were worried that it was going to be an F for fail on day one after the Rozell Interchange opened, particularly on Victoria Road. And worse still, we'd been told that there was going to be tree planting, active transport lanes, and when we asked about what the budget was for public domain improvements on Victoria Road, there was no money at all. So you can understand why our local community is so frustrated. They put up with all of the impacts, all of the construction impacts that went on for years and years, but were promised there was going to be a positive outcome at the end of it. Instead, they woke up on day one and found they were trapped in their homes.
Mr Megna, it seems that the community, in terms of your constituents, have certainly, it seems as though they've been sacrificed for something, their lives, their streets, their commutes. Doesn't sound like they're going to get any better. Is that how they're feeling?
Oh, yes, definitely. And I think you'll be hearing from some of them this afternoon. As I said, they can't back out of their driveways. Some are getting out late at night to reverse their cars and back them in so they can drive out. It's all of that rigmarole. And I think as the State Member for Dromoein mentioned earlier, it's getting across Dromoein. It's getting from the eastern side to the western side and vice versa, rather than up and down Victoria Road. That's a problem in itself, but getting around, we've got a lot of schools around there, a lot of local schools, a lot of commuters, people dropping kids off to school, kids walking to school, and when you're having people who are frustrated, who've been waiting half an hour, probably to get through a couple of phases of lights, there's no excuse for it. There's no excuse for running a red light or going the wrong way up a one-way street, but the frustration is building and it'll be an accident any day.
We have had one submission that has listed some of the feedback from constituents who have, whose lives have been impacted so much, and one of them said that they just can't live in the area anymore. They're actively looking to move outside because there is no way out in terms of their workout. Are you hearing any stories like that in terms of the impact?
No, Madam Chair. I haven't heard that from people saying that they're moving out of the area, but if people have made that submission, I can see why they'd be feeling like doing that. Probably renters as well, but people that own a home, then it takes a while to sell a house and get it on the market and get out, but renters will probably think, I'm out of here, if they know they have to wait four or five years for the solution.
Thank you. And my last question before we go to, Mr Byrne, you talked about surgical solutions. I think the previous witnesses were talking about structural change, very substantial changes. What would the council like to see? I mean, it's really, in some ways, the government's responsibility to come up with this, but I'm sure you've had some, put some thought to it.
Well, the Transport Agency has undertaken some mitigations, but as I say, the mitigations so far are like offering vitamin pills to people who actually need a triple bypass. And we don't know what surgical, structural interventions are being contemplated by Transport for New South Wales, or what's achievable. We don't know what the former government considered either, because there was so much secrecy around the project, but it is our firm belief that we can't go on like this indefinitely. A five-year wait is simply unsustainable. People can't go on for five more minutes like this. So we want the outcome of this inquiry to be that those potential surgical interventions are considered very carefully.
Thank you. I'll go to Ms Ward.
Thank you. Thank you for coming along today and for your submissions and your advocacy for your communities. Mr Megna, I just want to go to your submission, and you have mentioned the, some proposals to constructively address and some recommendations about how these issues can be addressed that you've heard from your community, particularly the congestion. The adjustment of traffic light signal phases seems to be something that, I don't want to preempt transport's submission, but it seems like that's something they're not so keen to do. And instead, we've heard about potentially people getting used to it, or taking six months to adjust, or leaving earlier or later, I think was mentioned from the meeting. Can you speak to that and why the traffic signal adjustments, which is what you're saying and your community is saying is important? Speak to that specifically and also your engagement with Transport for New South Wales, how they're responding.
Sure. Well, we've been regularly meeting over many months with Transport for New South Wales. Prior to, actually for quite a few years, Transport came to many workshops at Dromoein, at Canada Bay Council at our chambers at Dromoein, told us how well this was going to work, it was, you know, a dream run into the city, and we're all looking forward to a dream run into the city. Anything was better, but actually, it was better as it was rather than as it is now. It wasn't so bad, I don't think, at the opening, but when the signalling change happened on the Rozell Balmain side, that's my bit about kicking the can down the road, no blame to my friend here, Darcy Byrne, but it may have solved part of his problem, but it just kept on moving it west. I don't want to keep on moving it further west into Ride and Hunters Hill areas. We need to solve that problem. And whether you can get more cars out, rather than one or two cars per sequence, there needs to be a lot of thought. I'm not a traffic engineer, I don't know how to solve it. I know what the problem is, I can tell you the problem, I don't know how to solve it.
But if transport are saying it's not a problem and it's just taking time to adjust, what would you say to that? Because we have heard from the local member that it's not just getting on to Victoria Road and into the city, it's in fact getting across the peninsula from one side to the other. Can you just elaborate on that?
Well, if you can't get across a very busy choked road, there's a problem. There's a problem with traffic lights, there's a problem with cars coming from the west going east. So our people need to be getting across those lanes. You need the sequencing to change to allow more people to get across.
And has transport indicated to you that that's something they would consider, or they've just said, no, we'll give it adjustment?
No, sorry. They said, oh, you'll have to do your own local area traffic management plan. I mean, you don't just whip one of those out of your back pocket. It's something you need to plan, spend money on. Our staff then have to direct resource it from what they were doing and other area plans that we were doing elsewhere, to concentrate on this. I mean, we didn't cause a problem.
Surely, it's a shared problem, isn't it? It's something that should be coordinated. And I think you've suggested a review of traffic management strategies and the traffic review as has the local member, I think that's in common. Have you been given feedback on whether that's a possibility, or is it just a no at this point?
Well, from the last meeting we had with traffic, the thing they left up in the air was, do your own local area traffic management plan, and fingers crossed for the next four years.
Did they offer to pay?
Sorry?
Did they offer to pay?
No.
And just on the journey times also, you've mentioned, I think we've heard that potentially there's been some narrative around journey times being better, in fact, on Victoria Road, but you've indicated that in fact the data highlights that travel times have increased.
Yes.
Can you just speak to that?
Well, we were told at that infamous public meeting on top of the pub, that traffic times are either better or know worse than what they were. Well, they might spend a billion dollars on a tunnel to have traffic times know worse than what they were. We could have just left the situation as it was, and our people in Dromoein could get across fairly easily, or a lot more easier than what they can now. And leaving five minutes earlier or five minutes later was just fairyland. I mean, five minutes on either side will not get you into the city or get you across the suburbs any better.
And I'll just finish on this, Chair, if I may. Just in terms of ongoing engagement, I think we heard from the local members about the level of engagement. You said you've had some meetings, but we did hear that one of those meetings was in a pub upstairs. Would you be supportive of another sort of opportunity for a community meeting where everyone's invited, everything's on the table, and there's the opportunity for those local community members to engage directly and put these proposals?
Most certainly. I mean, we were happy to facilitate it at the council, where it could have been, we could have had 150, 200 people there, it'd be livestreamed, like these premises are livestreamed.
You've got disability access?
Sorry?
You've got disability access?
We've got disability access. I mean, people that didn't want to go into a pub where there's gambling and alcohol would be able to attend either from their home or at the council chambers. We had that opportunity to do it, but I found out about the public meeting at the pub in social media.
Yeah, yeah.
And we were just ignored by the representations that we were making.
That's not fair.
Thank you. Questions from the government, Dr Sarah Kane.
Thank you very much. Mr Byrne, I wondered if you could talk to this a bit. Projects of this scale obviously are very long in the planning, development and execution. So I wondered if you could talk a bit about the overall experience under the former government about the planning and construction of the border West Connects.
For 12 years under the former government, throughout the life of the West Connects project, we were given no information, no engagement, no respect, and when local residents raised legitimate issues, thousands and thousands of them did, about the construction impacts, that was treated as a public relations issue. They were fobbed off to people from John Holland or CPB, who were communications experts, as opposed to engineers. We've had much greater engagement with Transport for New South Wales in the last year. The problem is, we're now getting to understand just how chaotic the decision-making was around the entirety of this project. So I have no complaint about the level of engagement that we're getting from Transport for New South Wales. Now, Howard Collins, when I rang him and said, would you be willing to come and turn up at Balmain Town Hall, to his credit, came and did so. He said, oh, do you think I'm going to come out of there in a box? And I said, no, but you're not going to be showered with roses either. And so there's a lot of distrust in our local community for John Holland, CPB, Transport for New South Wales and transurban. Everyone's already had a very bad experience of them over the last decade or more. So now when they're saying, oh, just trust us on the cleanup of asbestos, or, no, we're definitely doing all the mitigations, people don't believe them, and I don't believe them.
I wanted to ask, maybe Mr Banfield, in your submission, you talk about the modelling based on predict and provide, and then you posit vision and validate as an alternative. I wonder whether you could maybe just elaborate a bit on the difference between the two, and why predict and provide is problematic and shouldn't be relied on.
Yeah, look, it's a good question. Predict and provide, I guess, is the traditional traffic engineering approach to solving traffic problems, where the modelling is done, you forecast the future traffic, and then you look at mainly the intersections, because that's where the congestion often is, and you look at where level of service of those intersections falls below a certain point. And then usually the response to that is to widen the intersection or widen the section of road or whatever. Yeah, we think that that's a flawed method, because ultimately it means there's this endless process of providing more traffic capacity, all at the expense of livability, economic viability, because it just, it means that it becomes more and more difficult for people to get around easily, and ultimately, an unsustainable city and an uneconomic city. And I guess West Connects is all part of that, it's part of increasing road capacity based on forecasts. In contrast to that, the vision and validate is going to the community and saying, what's your vision for the future of your neighbourhood, or your region, or ultimately your city? And saying, well, we want, usually people say we want less traffic and we want to make it easier for people to get around. easier for people to get around by public transport and walking and cycling. So we, all the traffic, all the traffic planning is rallied around the vision rather than the traditional approach where it rallies around the model. So I guess that's a sort of a short summary.
So assuming we go with the vision and validate approach, does that, Mr Burns talked about a surgical intervention, but maybe the solution is actually in terms of trying to mode shift and get more people onto public transport. What kind of enhancements do you think are required to facilitate the necessary mode shift to take the number of cars off the road so that the traffic flows more effectively?
We're certainly advocating for an increase in public transport services now to the inner west and to the Balmain Peninsula in particular. Additional ferry services and additional bus services can make a difference. It was our position right from the very beginning that the Western Metro should have been a higher priority than West Connects. And now we're in a position where West Connects is open. We've spent more than $20 billion on it and we don't have a functional motorway system. But the Western Metro is still a decade away. So that's a lost decade that should have, they should have been reversed. It should have been a greater priority to get the Western Metro up and running. It's very difficult to say precisely what interventions now can fix this problem. I think it's on Transport for New South Wales to work that out. We're identifying, as Mayor Migna said, we're identifying the problem. We're stating that it's unacceptable and unsustainable. And we want Transport for New South Wales to put forward broader solutions than they have so far because we can't go on like this.
Yes. In your submission and the summary of the recommendations, you talk about the need to physically, visually and psychologically capture road capacity by opening public transport. I just forgive my ignorance and it could be terminology I'm just not used to. I'm not entirely clear what that means, but particularly the psychologically capture road capacity part of it. So my apology is if it's a term that I'm...
That's okay. I didn't draft the submission personally, but if I can just speak to the broader issue. Because there've been so many assertions that Victoria Road was going to be a tree-lined boulevard and that traffic flows were going to be reduced by 50%. And we'd had so little actual planning for the future of Victoria Road from the former government. We went away and undertook our own Rozell master plan for Victoria Road and Darling Street based on those assumptions. And so that involved additional active transport lanes on Victoria Road, tree planting. It was all predicated on the idea that there was going to be space opened up for active transport and for greater, not pedestrianisation, but to make the place a more pleasant place to be. We'd already completed that work largely when we got the truth out of Transport for New South Wales after the government changed, that there wasn't going to be a 50% reduction. And so actually, the member for Balmain and myself didn't agree on this point. Her advocacy both at council and in the parliament was that we should reduce lanes further on Victoria Road prior to the opening of the Rozell interchange. After the briefing that I've received, I knew that that could be a disastrous impact. And so we held back from actually adopting that master plan. And at one stage, the member for Balmain actually had competing petitions on her website. One saying that there should be more lanes on Victoria Road and one saying that there should be less lanes on Victoria Road. I don't blame her for that because we were misled by Transport for New South Wales over such a long period of time. So the argument that the officers have put to us, and there's a lot of transport experts who will say this, is if you're going to create a piece of infrastructure like the Rozell interchange, then you need to dedicate the lane space to active transport straight away. Otherwise, you get that induced demand from motor vehicles. I think we're past that point now with the Rozell interchange. We know that the demand is there. There's not any scope for reducing lanes on Victoria Road. And so we want Transport for New South Wales to urgently look at what are the surgical interventions that you could do across the network to make sure that this unsustainable situation doesn't go on.
Thank you. Just going back to the original design or the design for Rozell interchange and just wondering what the inner west council's involvement with that was. When did you first see the design? What feedback did you provide firstly?
We made detailed submissions to every single stage of West Connects. And our experience was that those submissions weren't taken seriously by the government. We had very little engagement or discussion. It was always about what they were going to do to us rather than talking about what we could do together. I'll give you one example. When stage one of West Connects opened, we knew from our own analysis that that was going to result in rat running around Lycah and Haberfield. And so we went and spent our own funds on developing a local traffic plan. We proposed $30 million worth of mitigations to the government. We never even received a reply. We asked for the data to be made transparently available about what the impact was on the traffic network. We never received that data. And so the experience that Mayor Migna has just described in Dromoein now is the same experience we've had right throughout the project, in which we weren't provided with transparent information. We weren't included in planning or decision-making. And it's frustrating because we did say all along, you don't have to be a genius to work out that if you have so much induced traffic demand coming to the same number of lanes on Victoria Road and the Anzac Bridge, it was going to be a tunnel to a traffic jam. It's no joy for us in having been right about it, but that is at the heart of the frustration that local people are feeling.
So you've fed in from the beginning, basically. You saw, was the original design that the council saw, that you saw very clear in terms of what it was going to do to local roads?
Well, it's changed so much over time. There's been so many different iterations. I remember when Barry O'Farrell first announced West Connects, it was going to run along or underneath Parramatta Road. That's completely different to the design that we've ended up with. One thing that's been constant throughout the design process is that we've had bugger oil input. And our submissions, which as it turns out were perfectly correct, were not taken seriously. And that's a big part of our frustration.
In fact, I think in your submission, I was just trying to find it, but you also mentioned the fact that for projects like this that had such substantial amendments to them, that they needed to be kind of reconsidered again in the planning process as a whole in terms of their impacts into the changes. There were so many changes with such significant impact over time. I think that's what the inner west council is arguing in terms of going forward recommendations for changes to the approvals system. Mr Banfield?
Look, the current system of modifying EISs, mods as we call them, I will say we do have input into each mod, but it is difficult on a large project when the modifications or the mods are significant. It can end up to the point where really a new environmental impact statement is needed. And it is difficult for council to keep track of all the changes. Yeah, it does feel like shooting at a moving target at times. Although I do acknowledge there are times when a modification could lead to an improvement as well.
Mr Migna, what about the Canada Bay in relation to the level of kind of involvement in the original design phase approvals process of Rozell interchange and the feedback that your council provided about the impacts? Was it clear from the start that the impacts would be as horrific as they are now in reality? And were you, was council arguing, I assume very strenuously, that it shouldn't go ahead?
No, Madam Chair. By the workshops that we had with transport officials, it was going to be, this was the Nirvana, this was going to be the new the new way of travelling. It would take cars off the road. It'd be easy to get into the city. Like rat running wouldn't even occur. It would be just a dream run. We were never told about the two bus lanes as far as I can recall. That may be something that's come in later, which seems to be the problem, as I think we heard from previous speakers earlier, that to get into the left lane to turn, these buses from the middle lane are blocking the traffic, which is causing more of a holdup. So we weren't told a lot of that detail. It was just, you know, all the pretty pictures and that was it. But we didn't suffer what inner west was suffering with rows and rows of houses being knocked down and the very big loss to their amenity. We were just having a tunnel going underneath from pretty much the end of our city at Dromoein, right at the tail end, going underneath. So we weren't expecting any drama to the extent of what we're getting now.
So it seems that the approvals process didn't tell the truth, really. The design and what was approved, you know, what the community was consulted on, what your council gave feedback on, actually wasn't the ultimate design in terms of the impact that it is having on the community.
I can't go back, Madam Chair, on what was given to us, but we all, I do remember that this was just a great initiative of transport. It was going to solve any traffic problems into the future with a growing city. And I think it was versed as this is, the city's growing, there'll be more people, there's more development, and this is going to get the cars off the road but underneath the road.
Thank you. I do want to make sure that we ask a question or two about the asbestos situation and what unfolded there. Again, in the submission, there was a lot of criticism around the lack of contact by, I understand the inner west council has tried to contact John Holland and CPB contractors. You say in here that it's unknown what actions the companies have undertaken to date. Now, that was probably written, you know, six weeks ago or something. I just wanted to see whether that is still the case, Mr Byrne.
John Holland and CPB have moved way too slow on the cleanup of the asbestos mulch in the Rozell Parklands. Because they don't believe that they are ultimately culpable for the asbestos contamination, and that may well be the case, you can see that they've got an obvious interest in trying to cut costs on the cleanup effort. Because if the person or entity that is found culpable goes out the back door, then John Holland and CPB will be worried that they're going to wear those costs. I was down at Rozell Parklands every day across the whole of summer. And John Holland and CPB said they had 40 people on site doing the cleanup. I reckon it was less than a dozen. And we'd been trying to warn Transport for New South Wales and the EPA throughout that time that the cleanup wasn't being undertaken quickly enough because it wasn't being resourced properly. There weren't enough staff on site there. And because our experience of John Holland and CPB has been so poor over such a long period of time and there's thousands and thousands of local residents around the interchange who've been, who've had legitimate concerns, fobbed off or treated as a public relations issue across the last five years during the construction, we're not starting from a position of trust. In our local community, Transport for New South Wales, John Holland, CPB and Transurban are all considered to be entities that don't really give a damn about Rozell. And people feel that way rightly. And we'd like to see Transport for New South Wales being a bit tougher with John Holland and CPB in the future.
You also mentioned in your submission that you weren't happy with Transport for New South Wales or the EPA in terms of their response, that they were too slow to communicate. Do you care to comment any further about that?
I thought it was a mistake from the EPA to issue the order only, for the cleanup order to be issued only to Transport for New South Wales, when it was John Holland and CPB who were actually undertaking the work. It seemed obvious to us that the order should have been issued against, to them as well. And that might have put a bit more pressure on them to get it done. Thankfully, the asbestos mulch has now all been removed. So there was an extension granted. The second deadline has been met. But only half the park has been reopened. And there's hundreds and hundreds of trees and shrubs that have died in the meantime. And we're very worried that John Holland and CPB will cut costs again on restoring the park. This is the park that was meant to be the compensation for the enormous impacts that our community had experienced throughout West Connects. And I'll just add this point as well. You know, when they sold off West Connects, created a $5 billion fund called West Invest. There was one council between the CBD and the Blue Mountains that was excluded from applying for funds from West Invest. I'll let you guess which one. The inner west, the one place where West Connects was actually built. So you can see why all of this is building into such a sense of frustration for our local community.
Before I throw to Ms Ward for a question, so I understand the parks were shut off in terms of the community going through, the potential for kids, dogs, whatever with asbestos. But you're also saying that workers to go in and water the plants and, you know, substantial trees, as in smaller trees, they weren't allowed in either. And so we've seen a lot of the trees die. Is that what you're saying?
I think because of the removal of the mulch, some of the vegetation was depended upon the mulch in order to be able to grow. The fact that the trees were planted in November and December is not ideal. We don't do any street tree planting in those periods because trees die. And so I don't think that was necessarily a case of negligence, but it's a consequence of the whole park being a contaminated site.
Thank you. Ms Ward?
Thank you, Chair. I just had a question, Mr Mayor Migna, to you in relation to, one of the terms of reference is the adequacy of Transport for New South Wales and in relation to public communication in the period leading to and directly after the opening of the Rozell interchange. I just wondered if you could assist the committee addressing that and your experience of that communication with Transport the six months before, say, the opening and the six months that have been subsequent to its opening.
Well, look, I know that our council staff and the general manager and directors would have been in contact with Transport on a regular basis. And I'm not really privy to the conversations that happened there, but I certainly wasn't getting any feedback from our senior staff that there was going to be a problem on day one. And there wasn't a problem on day one. It was probably on day whatever that the changes happened up in Rozell and Balmain, that things started getting messy down our end. And I have handed up my submission to Hansart. Could I also hand up the rat running map that we've?
Yeah.
All that red is a rat running. That's our Dromoein peninsula and that's where people are going. So I can hand that up as well, so it forms part of this submission.
Thank you very much. I just wondered if you, do you also have a digital copy of that by any chance?
I can get it to you.
That would be useful. Thank you so much, yeah.
Chris has one thing on that rat run then, given that you have said there's these rat runs, the community has said there's these rat runs. Is it the case that Transport has said, okay, we'll look at that or we'll address that or we'll take that on board? Or has it been, look, drivers need to change their behaviour? Is that what's kind of been, I just want to get an understanding of the field?
We've been told multiple times now from Transport, it'll take six months. We're into month five. Take an alternative route of transport. I've already said the ferries are full. By the time they hit Canada Bay, they're full from up the river, from Sydney Olympic Park, by the time it gets to Cabarita and then into us, that's it, forget about it. It'd be great if there were more ferries on that start or skip a few stations so that we can pick up the bulk. People live out, as you can see by that map, Canada Bay just runs along the river. People live there. They can walk five minutes to a wharf. It's no big deal to walk to a wharf. I'm sure people don't want to get in their car and sit for half an hour or 15 or 20 minutes or an hour to get into town when they can take a leisurely ride along the Parramatta River. So that needs to be fixed.
So, sorry, just on that, we just say more frequent services or more services?
Well, more services or skip some stations, some ferry stops? And, you know, do every second one or whatever. They have to work all that out. They know where the people are. You see the ferries go by, and I've gone into the city numerous times, and you just see the ferry go by and it doesn't even pull in. Because they ask on the ferry, anyone getting off at Dromoein? If no one's getting off in Dromoein, they just go by and you just wave them as they go by. So, and you get back in the car, you drive up to either another ferry spot. We're lucky that we've got quite a few. We've had them over the last 30 years now. You can go to Chiswick or you can go somewhere else. But by that stage, you're running, you're looking for a parking spot, you're trying to get into town, you end up here frustrated. And there's got to be a better way of doing it.
Thank you. Thank you all for attending. That's the end of this session. The committee will be in touch if you've taken any questions on notice, which I don't believe you have, or if there's any supplementary questions by members. Thank you so much.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. We'll call our next witnesses.
Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome to our next witnesses. Thanks so much for coming along. We'll begin by getting you all sworn in. So you should all have the oath of affirmation in front of you. So we'll start on my left with Mister Fletcher. If you could state your name and position, title, please, and then swear either the oath or affirmation.
My name is Jonathan Fletcher. I am a local business owner in the Balmain-Rosehill area. And I'm here um as a representative of the chamber, as a business owner. And I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. I never thought I'd have to say that, so help me God.
Thank you very much. Ms Daly.
So my name's Belinda Daly. I am Vice President of the Balmain-Rosehill Chamber of Commerce and also a small business owner in Balmain-Rosehill. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you very much. Uh Mister Durkach, is it?
Thank you. Um good morning, everybody. Um my name is Serge Durkach. Um I'm a longstanding resident of Canada Bay, also a small business owner, and I'm also the current President of the Drumoin Business Chamber. So um I swear that the evidence now that I'm about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thanks very much. And finally, Mister Chapman.
Uh my name is Mark Chapman, and I've been the President of the Lyric and Dale Business Chamber for the last nine years. I swear the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you. And now, uh do each of you, in terms of each of the uh chambers, have a short opening statement to make? Ms Daly, is that you? Thank you.
Yes. So I'm here today as Vice President of the Balmain-Rosehill Chamber of Commerce, and we represent a hundred and sixty member businesses and more than three hundred and fifty businesses that trade within three kilometres of the Rosehill Interchange. I stand before you today to shed light on the impact of our local business community over the past four years. What was envisioned as a transformative project has unfortunately led to a slow and methodical rebranding of Balmain and Rosehill, not as a thriving hub, but as an area to avoid due to perceived traffic congestion. The businesses in our community have struggled immensely due to decreased foot traffic and customers unwilling to navigate the traffic congestion throughout the four-year period, but even more significantly now that the project is complete. This has led to considerable economic challenges for our local establishments and even those wanting to o- open businesses in our area. While the interchange may benefit those outside our community, its adverse effects have left us grappling with a legacy that undermines the vibrancy of our area, our beautiful village, our unique high street, and our heritage. We surveyed all our members and received significant feedback on the challenges. Simple things like courier and supply deliveries are more difficult. We know that more than sixty-five percent of workers have longer commutes to their jobs. They do not live nearby. These are people working in retail and hospitality. Local businesses are telling us it's harder to retain and attract staff, and it's weekdays and weekends that affect it, weekends being our most important trading days. We urgently need substantial investment to revitalize our community and businesses which have borne the brunt of long-term construction, yet we feel we have been forgotten. The promise of freedom with the opening of the Rosehill Interchange has sadly resulted resulted in businesses feeling caged, unable to thrive as they once did. Now I'd like to introduce Jonathan Fletcher, who owns a business, Running Science. He is a member of our chamber, and like so many other local small businesses, is experiencing the effects of the Rosehill Interchange.
Thank you, Belinda. Um thank you, everybody, uh for inviting me along. To echo part of what Belinda has said, um I am here, yes, to represent the local business community. I've owned a business in the area for over ten years. And um I'm very, as Belinda would agree with, I'm very connected with all the different businesses. I have the pulse of 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 this community, and I know how vibrant it was. And I have a very um, you know, deep um, you know, feeling about how that's changed. And that comes from a place of being embedded in that community, day in, day out, you know, for the last ten years. I'll add that to say that I am very protective of our community, and that's our local business community, as I think everybody is. Community is the, is one thing that is extremely important, and I think the world is really waking up to that at the moment. So things that affect the community, like projects like this, which, you know, there's going to be effects, I understand that, um I take that to heart. And it is serious, and it's worth talking about. And if there's things that we can do better for the next project, I'm a willing participant in that. Last thing I'll say is I I'm I'm definitely here to show solidarity and message you know, with Belinda, with Serge, and with Mark on, you know, what we have felt, what we've experienced. I'm not here today, and I'm not the kind of person that, you know, likes to just point fingers and things. That's, it's often very easy to do, it often doesn't land us in a good place. You know, I'm here to participate in a process that I I would love to think yields a good outcome on many fronts, um and particularly selfishly maybe for our own business community. So that's it.
Thank you, Mister Fletcher. Mister Durkach, do you have a statement?
Um I I don't, didn't prepare a a specific statement, but however, listening and talking to my colleagues here, I would just say ditto, because the same issues apply to the Drumoin area. We we represent, in a very loose manner, ninety businesses or ninety people who are um conversant with our chamber. We're small, we're unique, we have no power. We um, we talk with council, um we we have had conversations with council and Transport for New South Wales about this, and we feel like there's uh very difficult to to make progress. The the impact on the Drumoin business, particularly Victoria Road and Lions Road, is evidenced by the vacant um uh premises that are there. I I haven't counted them, but if you walk up and down, how difficult it is to list them for for that reason. The position of this chamber or ours is to, what can we do differently? And how can we be smarter in how to try and fix this? And in our submission, that's what we've put forward. Parking is an issue, and the parking has been kept kept on putting, put back onto the back burner. There there are many, many parking spots, public and private, that are just not being utilized because there's no system to manage them properly, you know? And as um common spaces are uh uh brought in by this government, Formosa Street, Church Street, um ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty car spots are removed. Again, car spots are removed from um Victoria Road, uh which were there before, and um you can't park there after seven PM. And businesses such as Harris Farm and would benefit the ability to park after seven PM till three in the morning or six o'clock in the morning. Why, I I don't know, and there seems to be a lack of interest in doing that. So to think innovatively about how we use that infrastructure with technology is probably what where our interest is, because um you have technology like Park and Pay. Do you start to think about social parking schemes? Do you talk about parking hubs? You've got Birkenhead Shopping Centre with a a unutilized car park for probably fifty percent of the time during the during the week. And we're not, we're not exploring that to get cars off the street so people can use public transport. I think the bus lane was mentioned previously. Whoever decided to put the bus lane in the middle of Victoria Road in between um uh Iron Cove Bridge and up to to uh Lions Road, I just don't, that doesn't, that doesn't make sense, you know? And the other impact is on our colleagues in Gladesville, because uh anyone who has to traverse the Gladesville Bridge used to be able to do it in ten, fifteen minutes. It takes them more than half an hour because of the sequencing of the lights, it's pushing everything back to beyond that. So there's a huge impact on that stretch of road on many people, whilst um right now Victoria Road is running quite freely today, maybe because it's school holidays, because that does make a difference. But um in in use, as a cyclist using Victoria Road and crossing it, you, before, before the interchange, there was always a stream of traffic moving on the Iron Cove Bridge. Now that stream of traffic has disappeared because it's all been pushed back. So the sequencing of lights and how that has been used, it's it's changed dramatically, and and it's seemingly um relieving congestion, but I don't believe that's the case. We're just pushing it elsewhere.
Pushing. Thank you, Mister Durkach. We'll go, Mister Chapman, do you have a short opening sentence to do? Thank you.
Thanks, Madam Chair, and honourable members of the committee. As I said, my name's Mark Chapman, I've been the President of the Lyric and Dale Chamber for a period of nine years, and throughout the process of the early stages of Westconnex planning. I don't appear here today in objection of progress and improvements of infrastructure for our city and suburbs. That's why I'm thin clear from our chamber. But I do appear today in solidarity with the business community and residents of our precincts that have been impacted by the process and now the outcomes for the Rosehill Interchange and Westconnex project. From a planning perspective, there was never a clear communication of the end game or a big picture plan provided for the precincts to show what the subsequent overall effects of the benefits would be in connection to the interchange in the system. Traffic proposals that were submitted at different stages for change to the surrounding arterial and local roads did not show a consideration for the businesses or the residential conditions in these areas. The timing of these works and proposed changes also seemed contradictory to what the tunnel work, network was going to deliver upon completion as originally planned. Whilst communication and consultation took place, often the outcomes and responses were vague or deflected with no further engagement or follow-up. There are still no clear indications of some of the proposed roadworks and changes or the timing of these works, or in fact they're still being planned. As I said, we're not opposed to change or progression that is going to benefit our communities, but the holistic planning, communication, and delivery approach from the departments that are charged with delivering these projects is integral to allow the realization of these benefits for our communities. We hope the outcomes and the lessons learnt from this project will go a long way to improve future planning and delivery of significant infrastructure to benefit the communities as a whole. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Firstly, Ms Daly, you mentioned a survey of uh the businesses. You don't have to say yes to this, of course, but would the committee be able to see uh that survey and the contents?
Yes, we can submit that digitally.
Thank you, thank you. That would be um extremely useful. So I wanted to just ask you all about the consultation to begin with and kind of what you knew i- in terms of the impacts on your local streets. We've heard, you know, some people say that they were promised that it would ease congestion. Were you involved? Was your uh chamber uh involved in the early stages and able to uh feed the views in in terms of what the impact of Westconnex and the Rosehill Interchange would would be on your local communities firstly? And uh if so, do you think what has eventuated was what you were informed would would be happening? Um I'll start with you, Mister Chapman.
Uh Madam Chair, look, I think there was, this early consultation mostly came through the councils, and obviously there was a lot of pushback in regards to the projects as a whole, with the Stop Westconnex campaigns and those sorts of things. There was a collective approach from a lot of us in the business community that we welcomed, you know, improvements and upgrades to the transport and network system. But there was no clear engagement or direct engagement with us for our feedback on those initial design processes. It was only when proposals for the changes actually came through and were published for feedback that we then were able to engage. By that stage, it was almost like the horse had bolted. The beast was moving, uh and we didn't have any real clear, I guess, opportunity to provide constructive feedback, which we attempted to do. I met on-site at the at the junction of Norton Street and City Westlink with a couple of representatives there, and actually voiced my opinion in the way that, well, we can read regulations, we can look up-
They were representatives of?
Of tr- of Transport for New South Wales.
Thank you.
And those plans that were being pushed forward, uh we actually questioned in the sense of why? Why do this now? Isn't this supposed, isn't the project supposed to be reducing the the flow, reducing uh traffic in these areas? Why do we need to do these holistic drastic changes to these intersections if there's going to be less traffic? And could there be smaller measures put in place as testers to see if that would actually benefit? Rather than doing, going and spending another however many millions of dollars on ripping up another intersection, which is quite a large intersection, that Norton Street, Dal- uh Daly Road and City Westlink was probably one of the ma- well, I think it was, at the time, the submissions were one of the largest submissions against the project in the whole of the Westconnex lifecycle. So it just shows that at the time, people providing feedback were informed, we read up, we looked at regulations and what the benefits could be. And actually, when we pushed back, it just disappeared for some reason. And that's one of the ones we're talking about, is where we don't know if it's actually still going to be pushed forward with. But now, we're sort of, I guess, whether it's the knock-on effect of what's happened now is what they were trying to prepare for. But all that whole way through, there was no clear indication or end game, if that was the one thing, or it was just going to be street after street they were going to push forward with. And directing traffic into the local streets to get through that system.
Uh do either of you, any um other witnesses have any comments on that? The kind of directing, you know, the traffic being pushed into uh other roads and local roads? Was that made clear? Was it, did, were you expecting that? Or was it, did it come as a as a surprise to everybody when the interchange opened? Or was it made clear during the assessment process and during the community consultation process that that was what was going to be the impact?
Yeah. I think um during the whole process of the construction, we were told a different story of what the Rosehill Interchange would actually bring, to the point of there was a plan for a beautification of Victoria Road, because it would be a wonderful boulevard with no cars, um beautiful trees, and you would even be able to park on Victoria Road. What us, what happened when the Rosehill Interchange um opened was a surprise for all people, I think. Residents, businesses, um people who travel to and from the area. It was a, you know, it wasn't what we were promised throughout the um, throughout the whole construction period. And to be honest, we were all taken surprised about the congestion and traffic that was experienced, especially in that first four weeks of opening. You could see cars and buses, which is public transport, which we're trying to encourage, blocked down for three kilometres down the Balmain Peninsula. Without a lie, personally, I experienced crossing Victoria Road to drop my children to school, and it was a one-hour trip to get back to the Lilyfield side of Darling Street. So it was really something that we didn't expect and not what was communicated to us through the whole construction period.
Mister Fletcher, um how are the businesses, how are they feeling in terms of whether there's going to be substantial change now over the next few years? Do they, do they think that it's going to get better quickly?
Are you asking that question around how businesses felt around before this started, or what?
Yeah, no, I'm thinking going forward now, uh because we've, we've, we've heard that, and you said that businesses are kind of feeling severely impacted, there's less customers, parking's difficult, we've got your submission that talks about even deliveries are taking longer and late. Are they hopeful that things will change? Or are they feeling a bit in despair that uh there are no solutions to?
Despair.
Yeah.
So I'll I'll answer that by saying, yes, in despair. You know, I've I've spoken to a number of business owners about, you know, what's going on and what is happening. And uh and I can, I can talk to some of the business owners a little bit more freely than the head of the chamber, but um people just go, what, what, what can you do? What, what can we do? Nothing's going to happen, right? The other thing I'll say, again, it's a general, a general statement, that before this project kicked off, I don't remember, I know I'm under oath, but I don't remember any consultative process with the local business owners. And I, I can't say there wasn't one for sure, but I don't remember one. And I don't remember discussions about what was about to happen. And I'm speaking again on behalf of a number of different businesses. And I'm speaking again on behalf of a number of different businesses, not, not mine. I'm speaking about the general community. There wasn't one.
Mr. Durkach, how was the consultation with, uh, the Drumoyne community?
Um, the Drumoyne community probably falls in a similar category, but I, I want to just step back a bit further before even this happened was, um, when the twenty-four, the, the, the new bus lane, which was, I think, from Monday to Friday, um, was introduced. It was a complete surprise firstly to the council, uh, because they had no concept this is over Gladesville Bridge up to, uh, there was, uh, it was a complete shock. In fact, we've, we as the chamber facilitator, meeting with Transport for New South Wales at the, at the, um, council chambers. Because the then mayor, Angela Tsarekas, he was completely, uh, uh, astounded that there was no warning of this. So that was one really big impact where that created gridlock for like, um, and that was before the, um, the interchange happened. Um, the chamber has worked or tried to communicate with and through council. So pretty much what, um, Mayor Migna said, we've, we've been in, but not directly. Uh, there was no direct contact from Transport New South Wales with the, the chamber or other businesses. But, uh, maybe we're in a different category, maybe we're a different group, maybe we're a different chamber, but, uh, the short answer is no.
Thank you. Um, I'll go to questions from Ms. Natalie Ward now.
Uh, thank you. I, I have some other questions. I just want to pick up on that last point, um, if I may, um, just on the engagement. So, um, sit, but just prior to the opening, you said there was no, um, engagement with the chamber. Has there been any since? Is there an opportunity to engage with Transport for New South Wales and convey these things and, and have that ongoing dialogue? Hey, um, there's some tweaks, um, pretty serious tweaks.
Always opportunity to engage with, with, with the chamber, uh, and again-
No, no, so I'm talking about transport. So yeah, what, what has occurred?
Nothing. No, we, we've had no contact or discussion with, with transport post this. Um, but that actually, um, doesn't really surprise me. Uh, we try and work with council because whatever impacts council, impacts chamber, impacts the community. So rather than have a conversation directly with the chamber, the chamber, the council and the residents together would be far more valuable to have than just talking to us directly. Because I, we would assemble maybe half a dozen businesses.
Yep.
You know, so that's, yeah.
And you're, the businesses that you represent would surely want that voice. Um, you're trying to work constructively, I can see, um, through the submission with council, with residents to try and have solutions, um.
We have some ideas we'd like to share and explore whether they're possible.
Yeah. Can I just go to one of those and then I might ask you all to comment respectively? But, um, again, I, I, just on revisiting the sequencing of the traffic lights. It seems that that's a common suggestion across local members and you phrase that also as something that might assist particularly in your area, um, at Lyons and Victoria Roads and Edwin and Victoria Road, you've called out. Um, and you've said that's, you know, also to get across, um, I think it's been said across the peninsula. Can you just, um, elaborate on how that might hurl? Because, um, it might be one of those constructive things that could be done fairly quickly. The transport might think, well, you're not the expert, you're not a traffic person, we're the traffic people, we know best. But can you elaborate on how that might assist?
Uh, I, I am a retired and very, um, ailing engineer way back when and mechanical to that effect. But if you think about what's available in today's world, let's go to, um, artificial intelligence for a second. You think about all the surveillance and the measuring that happens right now. Um, like electricity, you can manage demand and distribute. Why can't some system, um, again, I've got no idea whether this is possible or not, measure, monitor and adjust, and maybe it already does. When you've got, um, no traffic on Victoria Road, release the traffic on Lyons Road, release the traffic on Day Street to enter Victoria Road. When the, when the Victoria Road gets banked up, then change the sequencing of the traffic lights. Yeah. It's purely a, a, a dream or a guess, but I would have thought with today's knowledge and in all those, but that's, that's something that would be possible of, of investigation, you know?
It's a great suggestion. We saw some gaps on Victoria Road today that potentially could have benefited from that responsive technology.
Today, Victoria was a dream, absolute dream.
Yeah, the day we go out, it's a dream, but-
It was absolutely incredible.
But, uh, uh, as you say, it's school holidays, um, as, as you say, um, and, and that's a good thing. If it is, if it is good and that's working, that's great. But there is a serious side to, to what you're saying. It's not just a, a luxury. It's also, you've mentioned, um, the increased risk of serious accidents is those who are frustrated seeing those lights potentially run them, um, try and grab that last couple of seconds of yellow or try and push the boundaries a bit because they're frustrated. And, um, can you just speak to that? And anything that you've in your, um, in your experience, you've seen or heard?
Absolutely. Lyons, Lyons Road and Victoria Road, but travelling from, from East Drumoyne, uh, when you, there's a green arrow to turn there, you could, you're lucky to get two cars to turn there. Lucky to get two cars and it banks up. Even today, I was crossing Edwin Street and I actually did a little video, not getting across into, into Drumoyne, the bulk of Drumoyne, but the other way, there's a line of cars right up past Formosa Street trying to get on Victoria Road, you know, and, and today was not a busy day on Victoria Road, maybe thirty cars, twenty cars. Actually, we did it just for the heck of it. But, and it gets worse in peak, in peak times. Today's not a peak time. Yeah.
Um, and so, um, do others of you care to comment on that kind of options for sequencing, for safety, for, you know, constructive suggestions, um, going forward?
Yeah, could, could I, and maybe I'm getting my role confused a little bit here, but I just wanted to sort of put something on the table. Um, in my past life, I worked in, um, pretty big IT projects, um, for a couple of the major banks. And some people may, remember the core banking project that CBA went on with. It was an enormous thing. It was, it was talked about, um, uh, very publicly. But not to get into IT here because we're talking about roads. But when you're doing a very big project, um, like that and you've got, you know, a core piece of infrastructure and you've got lots of other pieces of infrastructure, you've got traffic that will have to go backwards and forwards between some pieces, one way with others, different pieces of infrastructure that react different ways to web traffic. Um, and that project was incredibly complex. Um, but it was five percent of the value of the Westconnex project. Now, when you're doing a rogue project, and again, I'm not a, I'm not a, an engineer like my friend here, but it is, I would imagine, not that difficult to test the implications of making major changes to roads. It can't be that difficult. And what I would like to maybe ask, and I don't know if I'm allowed to do this, excuse me, but how did we test what was going to happen?
All right. Do any of you, um, wish to comment further on the, those, um, suggestions, um, traffic light sequencing, sequencing? No, looking likely.
The only comment I'd make is there seems to be activity now with cameras and there seems to be a, a, an attempt to tweak and it seems to be getting better. So let's put that into perspective, but it's, it's when it's at its breaking point is when it completely, um, collapses. And that's, that's what we're talking about, you know? Uh, and the breaking point happens either in weather or, or, or emergency or something. And I think the other point is, um, emergency vehicles trying to get out or into Drumoyne when that happens is, is a real concern to, to many people.
Yeah, we've heard that also. And I guess the point is that we can, um, and are over what's happened and learn lessons. But equally, it's, um, vitally important to your communities, your businesses, that we try and find solutions to this and, um, a way to move forward. And we don't, I suppose, want, if I'm hearing what you're saying, um, we don't want to sort of get to having that accident or having that tragedy to have to spur the changes. And while there are traffic experts and there's lots of monitoring, we saw lots of cameras, um, this morning will be, um, interesting. And it would be fantastic for the kids to not have to go back to school, just keep school holidays going because it's better for traffic. Um, uh, you know, ultimately, we do have to find solutions. Perhaps that monitoring is one of the ways that we could do that and adjustments. I'm hearing that from all of you pretty clearly. Um, and revisiting some of those tweaks around traffic lights or some of those roads that necessarily it's, um, just because drivers may take time to get used to things, um, it's not acceptable as it presently is to continue. Is that a fair assessment in each of your experiences? All right, I have just one more if I might here. Um, sorry, you?
And just, um, one thing on the sequencing, there is, um, only three roads out of the Baumane Peninsula, as we all know, and Darling Street is probably the critical one in terms of trade businesses on that high street. It's a well-known, um, street of shops, restaurants, nineteen heritage pubs. Um, the sequencing going in and out of Darling Street on both sides currently only allows two to three cars. You can see the queuing. And that's probably because they want more cars to flow freely down Victoria Road. But the adverse effect that has is people just see that and don't want to come to our area. So whether they're, um, we've had businesses say that people are changing their appointment times. They're going to a Pilates class later in the day to avoid traffic. They're changing behaviours. And what we fear as a Chamber of Commerce with so many businesses in our area is that that change of behaviour converts to changes of behaviour to trade outside our area because it just gets too hard. And people smart, they've got access to so many options. Um, they may choose to go elsewhere for their services, their goods, their shopping. Um, and the long-term effects of that is really what, um, we're afraid of.
Can I check with the other, uh, chambers of commerce with that same, same, uh, question, whether you have any response to that?
Uh, yes, in, in some ways, very, uh, different to the peninsula. Obviously, it's a very unique situation as far as the Baumane Peninsula goes. But as far as where Lyricard is, there is that congestion being caused in regards to the traffic for delivery times. Uh, businesses that require deliveries at certain times of the morning to be able to open for their day's trade are now being pushed back. And I've seen that and the congestion that's causing where deliveries are coming in later just so they can stay out of the traffic effectively, or they just can't get there. And that's that knock-on effect as well. There's also the pinch point of what the interchange has caused is now shifting traffic to Paramatta Road. And so we're sort of being bookended by absolute congestion. So no matter which way you go now, it turns certain times of the day, there is absolute congestion on both sides. So we're al- almost being turned into an island in some ways, that people just don't want to come and try and get in or out of. As Blinda was saying, that people are now choosing to say, well, let's just stay out of there because it's just too hard. Um, and so there are those, those effects that are coming, that are being seen and coming through. There's no hard data on that, but it is, you know, people, business owners know, know their customers. You know, there was COVID for a period of time. COVID's, you know, we've recovered from that. That's something we've all pushed through and come out the backside of. But then to now cop these changes and these congestion issues that are now causing further knock-on effects, it's just sort of like, well, when, when are we going to get a breath to try and rebuild? And there's all this talk about the inner west and trying to re-invigorate your Norton Streets and your high streets of the inner west and all those sorts of things that are the big hot topics that everyone's willing to talk about and everyone wants to get on board with. But it just seems like we get a couple of steps forward, then get drawn back because of the issues that keep coming up in the surrounding area. So yes, I agree in regards to those knock-on effects for the businesses. Um, what the solutions are, well, we've got to work through those. And that's where I hope that we can see, whether it's tweaks of traffic conditions or, I don't know what the answers are. And we're not here to provide those answers, but I guess from the feedback point of view is that how do we, I guess, assist in that point that it doesn't happen again? Because of these knock-on effects and these projects that happen should be beneficial. Benefit, you know, we should be the beneficiaries of these infrastructure upgrades and the, and the works that are being done. And how can that increase local business, local amenities, the schools, the safety for pedestrians and that sort of things?
Thank you. And, Mr., yeah, Mr. Fletcher?
Can I just add, sorry, just to add, again echoing, um, what Mark said there, but, you know, seventy thousand cars go down Victoria Road every day roughly. Um, and I'm going to go back to the web traffic example and apologies to do this, but it simplifies it in my mind. When you make changes to, you know, an artery like that, it's not difficult to map out what the possibilities are and what might happen. And I'm not pointing fingers at anybody. It was just something that, you know, maybe wasn't done in the right priority somewhere. Because I, you know, I think I could speak for a lot of business owners. It would be amazing to sit down and have a look before something was going to happen. Say, oh, this is going to go here, all this traffic's going to go there. Wow, right, okay, I get it. It's great that the roads are going in. And by the way, I live in Southern Highlands. And that M eight for me is a godsend. Okay, so not, not against progress and new roads going in. And, and, you know, Mark and I had a chat about this today. But I think when you, when you do any major project or any big change involving millions of people, um, people need to feel involved.
So when you're, when you're saying, you, you're just saying for, for, for people to say, this road's going in, uh, this is what it's going to do.
Mm-hmm.
Are you saying that the, uh, designers, the, whoever thought up this project, that they didn't do that in the first place or they didn't consult with the community about it?
I don't know the answer to that.
That's pretty extraordinary, isn't it? So we've got very highly paid executives. I'm putting it to, extremely highly paid executives at Transurban and, and within Transport for New South Wales. I assume a bunch of very highly paid executives were, uh, poring over this. Surely they knew, uh, what was going to happen. You're suggesting, Mr. Fletcher, maybe they didn't actually know or they didn't do their homework? Or they did not?
My, my, but did they speak to the right people? Because I'm sure they did consultation. I'm sure they had meetings with various parties, but, and that, on, being on their side of the fence, they've got to find the right people who may be the one sitting here today or the whatever. Because talking to the right people, when you go to the frontline, the frontline gives you the best answer. The, the only comment I also just detour, reiterate, um, it's a sleeping, I, I, actually, I don't know much about. What's the story with the West Harbour Tunnel? What impact will it have? What lessons could be learnt? Because, um, to be honest, I have no idea where it comes out, what it does. And will it make, um, and, and I believe it was supposed to be in finish, but, uh, it's underground out of sight, out of mind. Now, is it going to improve or is it not going to improve the impact on this interchange? I actually do not know. And I, I think if I, if I surveyed our chamber, no one even would, either would know, you know, because it's either too complicated or it's just out of sight, out of mind until it happens.
Um, given their track record, I don't think Transurban knows and I don't think Transport for New South Wales have any idea what's going to be the impact. Um, members of the government, Mr. D Adam?
In the earlier session, I asked about, uh, the predictive models that were used to, uh, to, um, underpin the project. Uh, and the model that's been used by Transport for New South Wales, predict and provide. It's clear that the predictions haven't been particularly accurate. Uh, the alternative is this idea of vision and validate. And so that starts, uh, from the explanation that was provided, uh, by the Inner West Council was that it starts with saying, well, what, what do we want our communities to look like? What? So I thought I might give you the opportunity to say, okay, in, in light of the circumstance, what's your kind of vision about how things should be in your communities? That might then be able to be reflected in the adjustments that are trying to be made uh, to try and, uh, rectify some of the issues that have been generated by poor prediction.
My, my, is that because I've thought about that, we've talked about that a fair bit? An example of that is Laincove Council, um, where, and in North Sydney to a lesser extent, where they had some, uh, public space, which was a car park, uh, which was a horrible car park uh, in the midst of a, a centre. Uh, they, uh, constructed a community commercial and parking hub that you can, and it's using technology where it is an amazing place to go to. Easy to park, easy to access, different levels of parking. If you stay there for a long time, you pay, uh, there's, there's community areas. In places like Drumoyne, um, and councils have wanted to do this, uh, you can, there, there are areas that could be turned into that where it's the community business, uh, taking the, 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 the demand off Victoria Road and putting it back into other areas. And, and we've got to start thinking along those terms. And I know there's been master plans done backwards and forwards, but this is now bringing it to the forefront. Because if, if you created these, um, community hubs, um, it, it creates a good place for business. People will come and have coffees there, people will come and bring their children there, people have community meetings there, you know? And Laincove Council have done an exceptional job of doing that. I was there yesterday and it's fantastic. That's the vision that I could see for Drumoyne, from the top of Lyons Road to the back of Formosa Street. And potentially reaching into Five Dock with the new metro station as well. And I think council have started to consider those things. That's, that's partly my personal vision, but it would represent many of the, uh, businesses in, in my area.
Can I also add, just on the Laincove aspect is, I remember some of the earlier conversations I had with council when, you know, or some of the groups that were lobbying against Westconnex. And I actually used Laincove Tunnel as an example of how they did it quite well. Uh, where the tunnel went in and one of the first things they did was at the Laincove, uh, top of Longable Road there, the transport hub, the bus stops, the bus lanes. It was so easy for residents to walk up, straight up to the Epping Road, get on a bus and get to town. It was actually quicker to get in a bus, get on a bus and get into town from that point. All the traffic went underground. Yes, it was pushed back and people didn't want to pay tolls, but once they realised, which people are doing. I mean, I already know the realisation of the M four tunnel for my work that I need to do. It's changed my, my days and my, my planning. But Laincove Tunnel and that transport infrastructure that was put in on Epping Road changed the game for that lower North Shore area because people were able to get into town a lot easier. There's no trains there, obviously buses are a big thing. But the surprise, I think, for many, and the bus lanes have come up, is that how ineffective the bus lanes- But the surprise, I think, for many, and the bus lanes have come up, is that how ineffective the bus lanes are coming out of our areas now. Where there isn't the dedicated bus lane and why buses are being made to merge with traffic to get onto the Anzac Bridge. Why aren't those bus lanes dedicated as they are where they did it from the Lane Cove Tunnel on the M two, where they would just had a clear run? And people were happy to get on the bus because they went, great, I don't have to drive anymore. I've got a very easy way to get into town now. Whereas now people are not going on the bus because A, you can't get on one because they're too full. And B, you're probably sitting on a bus longer than you are in a car because of all the stops you've got to go through. Plus you've got to merge on with all the traffic congestion there. So I think there's things like that where a lot of the feedback that we're getting, uh, that I'm hearing is that there just isn't any real aspects of it that makes a lot of sense in terms of the merging of all the lanes into two. And coming out, there's all this dedication to the tunnels coming out. But the actual traffic that is coming, really coming in, I mean, quite frankly, it was easy to get through the Rose, Rose, uh, Rose Hill Bay Area. During the construction that it is now.
That's right.
And all that traffic that was above ground, that's now going through tunnels, was all still there. But it was twenty minutes less to get into the city when all that traffic, traffic was above ground. So the traffic hasn't reduced. It's now split, but it's harder to get into town. So that's where the, I guess, from, we're not experts, but anyone can see the picture of it. Is that how does that, how does that make sense in many ways? And I think that's where the modelling aspect comes in, applying the questions around the modelling and what was really done and dug into. When you take eighty thousand cars, you might put forty into a tunnel. But the other forty are still sitting somewhere, but the other eighty, eighty were all together before, now you're splitting and it's harder to get moving. So there, I guess, really stripping it down to the basics of it, is that where did it go wrong? And how did that planning process be, was undertaken to get to that point? And that's where the dispersment of, of vehicles, the person of people, people trying to change habits. From something that was actually wasn't that bad before. So we've promised, we've promised the dream, and now we're actually in a worse position than what we were beforehand. So I think that's where the confusion, I guess, is from the local residents and businesses. Is that how, how do we get, how do we end up in a worse spot than what we had before?
Confusion is putting it, is putting it mildly, I think.
Oh, anger.
Mr Chapman, in terms of how the businesses feel.
Oh, absolutely mildly. I can't repeat the language that's been used in many, in many instances and, you know, it. Well, to put it quite frankly, it doesn't pass the pub test. And that's where everyone always uses that slang term for, does it pass the pub test? Well, quite frankly, it just hasn't. And that would be the everyday person voicing their opinion about it, is that, did it pass the pub test? Well, sure, in theory, but now it just doesn't.
Mr Fletcher, you wanted to jump in?
Yeah, I am, as you probably can tell by my accent, um, a lot of my compatriots uh, have had a big role in, in building and designing and, and a lot of the work that's happened uh, on roads in Australia for a long time, not just with West Connects. And just what Mark was saying there, I, I called up uh, one of my friends. And I said, like, and I won't use the expletives because Irish people tend to do that quite a lot, but I called him up, said, how on earth can something like that happen? Like, honestly, ju- just like, um, just explain it to me. And, and again, I said, I, I don't think, I'm certainly not here to point any fingers. He said, look, things, things like this can happen when, you know, and this person's worked on projects all over the world, right? So, but things like this can happen when there's a small design change, a tunnel needs to get moved. You know, ten metres that way in one part of a suburb, which causes a sixty metre move in another suburb, which determines something quite profound with where something's going to pop out. Which can all of a sudden kibosh a plan around certain, you know, traffic flows and pinch points. And, you know, when you're doing a, a project as enormous as West Connects um, was or is. Um, these kinds of things can happen. Um, and I think again, going back to what, what Mark said, like, I mean, I, I'm not an engineer, I mean, I don't understand traffic flows. Um, but, but uh, I always mention his name, but, but, but this fellow said to me. Yeah, these things can happen. And I think it's, it's going back to my point early on. That if you model eighty thousand cars, you're going to put some of them here, some of them there, some of them down here. Different times of the day, week, month, school holidays, daylight savings, all these kind of things is not difficult to do. And I don't, you know, it's not difficult. Why did we not at least know? You know, have some contingency to say, you know, if we move that here, this could happen there, this could happen there. And we'd be able to sit down with business owners, chambers, residents, whoever it is. Politics aside for a minute, and sort of say, this, this is what we're looking at here. You know, these are all the moving parts of this. And I'm, I'm saying now, whether it's the fact Australia's never done something this big before or not, I don't know. But I think we took on such an enormous beast of a project. Um, and just had, probably collectively, didn't realise some of the impacts. Just didn't realise it. And I, you know, again, hopefully we can sort of, you know, hand on heart and say, you know what? This is actually what's happened here. And whether, whether, whether this forum needs to find out who and where and all that kind of stuff. Um, it's happened. What we're saying is, we're not in here. We're all quite, you know, seasoned business leaders in here and we're all in here. Um, representing the fact that there are, you know, serious issues for lots of businesses, lots of them. So I think, yeah, I, I'm echoing that and I'm saying, we could have predicted a lot of this.
Thank you, Mr Fletcher.
I think, I think one of the big things about, you know, high street trading, it is difficult regardless of, um, running a small business is not an easy task. It, and we're got economic issues as well. Um, but when you overlay this with what has happened over the last, um, let's call it four months. But really four years of long-term construction. These, five, these businesses are really um, suffering on all levels. And you can see that, look, we don't have the hard data, but you can see on the high street, the empty shops. Um, the changing of trading, shops closing down, restaurants not making it. And that's, I mean, that's why we're here today. We're volunteers in this process. We are representing a whole bunch of businesses that, um, that can't all be here. But really have been affected by, you know, their access taken away from getting to their businesses.
Thank you. So you're talking about businesses suffering. You've both used that language today. Not all businesses are suffering. I mean, Transurban's a business, Transurban's a very big business and it's not suffering, is it? I mean, that is a genuine uh, statement, uh, uh, in terms of your response to that. It does sound like there's a lot of businesses that have been sacrificed, really. Uh, Transurban's making a hell of a lot of money out of that. How do you all feel as business people when you know that that's probably what's happening?
I mean, business is what makes the world go around. We understand there's all levels and scales of business. And we're not here to talk about any particular business, you know, you've, you've mentioned who you've mentioned. And, but I think the whole process and what our voice is wanting to get across is that every business is important, is as important as the other. Whether it's the larger scale business or whether it's the small mother and father business, or the corner shop. I think every business in, in the country contributes to the economy. And whatever scale that is, everyone pays their taxes, does the right thing. We're all forced to comply and do the right thing. As far as planning process goes, as far as due diligence goes, when we enter into agreements. Where we sign, when we sign the bottom line, dotted line on contracts or whatever that might be, we're expected to do the right thing. And if we don't, then we get hauled through, we get hauled over the coals by whatever authorities or agencies or whatever might be that we're reportable to. And I guess that's the, the crux of it is that from a small business perspective. We just want to make sure that every small business is treated the same as every other business. We're not just forgotten and we're not pushed aside. To ensure that something just keeps moving. Like I said, no business is against progress, no business is against moving forward, because that's what we have to do. We have to progress, we have to grow, we have to move forward. But we want to make sure that what we're being held accountable to is being, everyone is being held accountable to. And I think that's what it comes down to, is that the decisions we have to make, we're accountable for. So whatever level of business, whatever decision's being made, that people are being held accountable, no matter what, no matter what level you're sitting at. And I think that's the, to simplify ma- mainly, and I said, as Fletcher was saying, you know, we're not here to point fingers. We're not here to cry foul or try and put someone in the noose. We're just here to ensure that the same mistakes aren't making, aren't made moving forward.
Yep.
Because if, as businesses and as people, and as history tells, there's always people that have to suffer to get going, to, to move forward. And we understand that.
Yep.
There's always sacrifice that someone has to make for progress, for advancement, whatever that might be. It's happened forever. But we want to make sure the lessons learned and the mistakes that have been made don't reoccur in the departments, in the parties, or whatever that might, whoever it might be. That has to roll these projects and deliver these projects for the communities, that everyone's held to the same account. And I think that's collectively, I think that's probably the main way to look at it, is that
Yep.
We can't do much about this thing now, but we can help maybe widen the eyes of those who are making decisions. As to what the process can be for the next time it comes around. And if we're, if we're the ones that have to suffer a little bit of pain in our communities now. To make it better for the people down the track and our kids and everyone else ahead. We all do this for our kids and our families and all those are going to benefit from. We want to make sure that voice is being heard. So the same issues aren't, right, so people aren't sitting here and doing another twenty years talking about the same mistakes.
Thank you, Mr Chapman.
You, you're asking a very complex question and scenario to do it. And if you didn't have the Transurbans and the lend leases and the Mervacs and all of that, you wouldn't have this infrastructure in the first place. So I'm not here to defend them. If you didn't have the Transport for New South Wales, you wouldn't have this. If you didn't have the, the government uh, behind it and the economic environment, you wouldn't have this. The issue here is people and how people interact and work together on very, very complex things. And that's what feels like it's broken here, you know, and you're not going to get it right. You're completely not going to get it right. And the agendas of each of those four or five different groups are very different. Transurban is trying to um, deliver value to their shareholders. Transport for New South Wales are trying to deliver value to the government, um, you know, and so on and so forth. The, the small businesses want to just survive, make money and, and feed their families. And they're very, very conflicting in different agendas. You're not, councils have also a different agenda. You're not going to have that solved easily. But however, the, the, maybe a bigger high-level process with, comes back to what is the combined vision. Where you can get those people before you get terribly into the, 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 the construction stage. Because you make your money in design, you lose it in construction. That's, uh, I'm, I'm, I, you know, work for, if you spend the time in the design. Moving a line on a piece of paper is much cheaper than moving a wall after you've built it. And, and they're the principles, and, and I've come from a, you know, I'm probably a retired, you know, um, used by um, project manager, whatever, whatever, you know, and uh, those principles of how projects are set up at the very beginning, right at the ins, and, and I, and I'm not here to criticise it because I don't actually know. Can make a big difference on something like this. So, so it's a, um, the, the conflicting agendas, the contractual arrangements. Who's got the better skills to negotiate? And, and you know, Transurban employs and pays top dollar for people to, to negotiate on their behalf. Transport for New South Wales and so on and so forth. And, and it's the skills of that, those people that, that, that push the agendas or drive the the outcomes and possibly that's what's happened here as well. So.
Thank you. Uh, I'll just see whether there are any more questions from members. Mr D Adam.
Mister, uh, Durcash, uh, I wanted to ask about the, the issue around Lyons Road and Victoria Road. Do you think there's, uh, I suppose, an argument around uh, creating some kind of mechanism where, uh, the various stakeholders? It seems like there's not, not sufficient communication uh, between transport and the council, uh, and local businesses. We need to create some kind of mechanism. I know in your proposal, you've got, uh, uh, suggestion around uh, property on the corner of Lyons Road and Victoria Road. Like, that, that requires a whole lot of players to all work together. Um, and maybe that's a model that needs to be looked at in terms of, uh, how we uh, customise place-based solutions to the kind of policy of a move.
Sure, it's, it's worth a try.
Do you think that's?
We could assemble, I don't know, half a dozen businesses on that, on that intersection. There's a fi- there's a fire station there as well. There's a chemist, there's a real estate agent. If you bring the right people from transport who can, because we've had attempts to do that and we've talked about things in the past. But if you haven't got the right people who can make decisions with, from transport, to make the change, whether it's the sequencing of the lights, it, it's, it's a useless exercise. So the forum to do that can be done. That's not hard. It's the, uh, the ideas, et cetera. And then the, the execution of those ideas is, is where it usually falls apart. I mean.
One of the issues with that intersection, I think, is just the fact that their buses uh, terminate Wright's, Wright's Road, so they have to cross Victoria Road.
They do, yeah, sure.
Whether that's, you know, something that needs to be, you know, it's modification that might reduce a bit of pressure on that intersection and not.
It's, it's possible. And these, these are the discussions you have to have. And then, then the experts have got to, um, mo- test the model them and then implement them. So, um, but you know, um, you're, you're, you're familiar with that intersection, as am I. Um, and they've got to go, they've got to do a loop and whatever, and, and we're talking about roads that only just fit a bus. Only just fit a bus. Yeah, yep.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming along today. Uh, hopefully we can, um, the committee can determine a little bit more in terms of accountability. Uh, Mister Chapman, um, very eloquent words towards the end there. Uh, so thank you for coming along. Uh, the committee will now, uh, break for lunch. We will also be in touch if you took anything on notice, which I don't think you did, or if we have any further questions for you. Um, also just one, yeah, the document, yeah, but I also would just need to, I think some of you had written statements at the beginning. Um, if you're able to just hand those in, that would benefit Hansad as well, if you don't mind doing that. Thank you so much.
And thank you, and thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, the committee will break and we'll be back at one fifteen.
Welcome back to the afternoon session of today's hearing. We will welcome our next witness from the PNC of the Rosehill Public School, Ms Berryman. If you could please state your name and position, title and swear either an oath or an affirmation.
Okay. My name is Annabelle Berryman. I'm the current president of the Rosehill Public School PNC. Can you hear me now? Do you want me to start again?
No, I think still bring it closer. It's not, we're not hearing you.
Is that better?
Much better.
There we go. Should I start again?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Annabelle Berryman. I'm the president of the Rosehill Public School PNC Association. And I have an affirmation to read out. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you so much. Now, Ms Berryman, do you have a short opening statement to make for the committee?
Yes, I do. Thank you. I would like to thank the Chair, Ms Kate Furman, and the honourable members of this committee for inviting Rosehill Public School PNC to provide feedback, thoughts and opinions on the impacts of the Rosehill interchange, on Rosehill Public School students, their families and wider communities. There are four key topics that I'd like to cover briefly, and they are the safety of our children, on the roads and the air quality, traffic congestion for above-ground vehicles, the impact of the Rosehill interchange on the lives and families of the Rosehill Public School, and the discovery and clean-up of asbestos in Rosehill Parklands. The safety of our children in the community is now compromised. Two significant ways this is occurring every day are the gridlock traffic congestion that makes walking to school a type of squid game activity when attempting to cross the road, and the unfiltered air stacks emitting potentially deadly gases into the atmosphere and into the growing lungs of our children. Pedestrian safety is an essential right for all members of our community, and this is currently not the case. The community wants to know why the stacks aren't filtered. Is the cost of human lives too low compared to the cost of electricity? I believe that similar types of stacks are required by law to be filtered in parts of Europe. It is curious to our community why the laws do not apply overseas and do not apply here to protect us. Many years from now, we may learn the true cost of not filtering these stacks. Traffic congestion. There are numerous factors in the unmanageable traffic congestion, including the offset bus lane, numerous lanes merging into one lane, priority for toll-paying traffic and timed lights for above-ground vehicles. The impact of the Rosehill interchange in our community is one without significant positives. The discovery and clean-up of asbestos in Rosehill Parklands. It took a sharp-eyed Rosehill parent to notice the asbestos contamination and alert authorities. This is symbolic of our issues with the Rosehill interchange. And in summary, the traffic is bad, the air quality threatening, the soil contaminated, and the business is struggling as a direct result of the Rosehill interchange. And we suggest the following: if you are contractually obliged to keep the West connects open, one, filter all of the stacks; two, move the offset bus lane back to the curbside lane; and three, install a red light camera at the intersection of Darling Street and Victoria Road. Thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you. Thank you very much for, again, appearing today. Talked about the red light camera between, what was it, Darling Street and Victoria Road? And now, is that because of what you're witnessing and the members of the school, the parents are witnessing during drop-off? Is that why you're calling for that?
Yes, absolutely. I have a quote, a couple of quotes here I can read about that, that relate directly to it. One quote is, "The traffic in the mornings is sometimes so bad that it is hard to walk children to school. You need to weave around the cars blocking the crossings as they try to make their way onto and down Victoria Road. This is because there are too many lanes merging into one." May I read another statement?
Yes.
"The intersection of Darling Street and Victoria Road became dangerous for pedestrians when the interchange opened as confused and frustrated motorists blocked the crossings at the traffic lights and some continued to drive through them during the walk signal."
So basically, so your, the parents have witnessed behaviour you think that wasn't evident before the Rosehill interchange. Could you talk about the difference? If there has been, I'm asking whether there has been at that intersection?
Yeah, absolutely. There is concerns, and I can even reference some people who had older children who used to walk to school unaccompanied, crossing the road before, who now walk them to school because there's, as mentioned in those statements, traffic that continues to either go through the walk lanes during the walk signal or blocks them. So kids and other community members have to weave through traffic, so it's dangerous. And that has become apparent only after the interchange has opened.
Yeah. No, no, I'm not sure whether this, if rat runs, rat runs impacting you in Rosehill as well? People trying to avoid the areas that are more heavily impacted? Has that, is that the situation?
There are a couple of streets that you can go along and turn at that time illegally and get onto Victoria Road, and I have noticed myself and many other community members that that happens. However, it's dangerous to also do that because then you're turning onto the lane where the buses stop and then the dedicated bus lane, because as you know, two lanes now pretty much dedicated to buses. So there are other vehicles, peninsula traffic coming along that way as well to avoid the congestion of trying to get on through the proper channels during the peak hours.
And what stories have you heard about the impact that it's had in terms of time? In terms of kids' drop-off and pick-up? Has that also been a factor? I'm assuming drop-off is worse?
There are significant impacts and drop-off is worse because most people are trying to commute to work at a similar time. So I have stories from our community where they used to walk their kids to school and drive them when it was raining, and now the time is the same whether it's walking or driving because it takes so long, and also the traffic lights are so bad that they feel dangerous crossing the road a lot of the time. But many other members have mentioned that commute times have doubled or more than doubled. So they are just trying to avoid having to do it all or work from home more frequently.
And are you in a position to comment about the lack of pedestrian infrastructure now on Victoria Road and maybe even, I know we've got the active transport and but people are coming next, but firstly in terms of pedestrian crossing, we heard from the member for Balmayne earlier today who has heard about people crossing between, it's where Victoria Road meets, I think right at the end near Anzac Bridge, Robert Street actually, 700 metre, having to get from one side to the other almost. Have you heard about that, those impacts on that stretch of Victoria Road? So I'm assuming that some of the lights where pedestrians were able to cross aren't there anymore for starters. Is that correct?
I can't comment on the one right near Victoria Road. I do believe that there used to be crossing, there isn't a crossing anymore. However, I have seen people running across the road because that's a frustration point as well. What I can tell you is that there is so much traffic now that was never there before, and what the community believes they were promised has not been delivered. And as I mentioned before, there are no significant positive impacts from the Rosehill interchange opening. There seems to be quite numerous negative impacts, including that safety of our pedestrians, which is why we're asking for the red light camera at Victoria Road to discourage motorists for continuing across that intersection and to provide safe passage for the kids.
What, from your perspective, whether you were involved in the earliest stages of the Rosehill interchange, you know, the approvals process, design phase, consultation phase, what was the community promised?
This is from community feedback rather than direct involvement, but at that time, we were promised an enhancement, if anything, to our community. It would be that there would be less traffic above ground and most traffic would be pushed underneath. So it would be great if we would be able to get some numbers on what is the above-ground traffic now and what is the traffic numbers below ground in the tunnels? And has that been delivered as promised? Or is there an overall increase in the number of traffic, in number of vehicular traffic and therefore what's it percentage-wise? Because at the moment, just even looking without numbered data, it looks significantly more congested than ever before above ground, yet the tunnel traffic seems to be free-flowing.
Hmm. Thank you. Questions from the government? Yeah, Dr Kane.
Thank you so much for coming in and for representing the community, the school community. I must confess, I'm not a local to the area, so I'm trying to get my head around and looking at the maps and whatnot. So can you, so in terms of the students at your school and where they're drawn from, can you explain a bit because you seem to, yeah, it would just be helpful for me if you could sort of contextualise a bit where parents and students are coming from?
Yeah, absolutely. So Rosehill Public School, as you may be aware, sits just slightly offset from Victoria Road and faces Darling Street, which is sort of a high street, if you like. And the school catchment is on that peninsula side, so on the, yeah, the peninsula side and extends to the other side of Victoria Road also. So we have many, many, many students that have to cross that road, that have to cross Victoria Road, let me be very clear, to get onto the other side and therefore access to school at all each day.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. And again, it's just trying to go off a map. What surrounds the public school?
Mostly retail shops and there's a little bit of, I believe, I don't want to say industrial, but I think it's industrial zoned at the back where there's, you know, a car service place and a storage facility. Otherwise, it's predominantly residential houses and then the high street full of retail shops.
Thank you. Sorry, just contextual for my understanding. Thank you.
You were talking about Rosehill, just quickly in terms of the Rosehill, the, sorry, Victoria Road. There's been a lot of promise. I think that was, that was part of the attraction, wasn't it? For the local community to begin with, that Rosehill, I think we heard today that it would be this incredible boulevard of pedestrians and cyclists and trees, yes, and trees. And that would have been incredible. Hopefully it will still happen. I'm interested to know what you know about that. But for the students, so I wasn't aware of the students needing to cross Victoria Road, that's very significant. Firstly, yes, how much is that impacting you? And how important is it that that boulevard-ication, boulevardification of Victoria Road occurs?
I think at the moment, the boulevard is the furthest thing from our minds. We're not really interested right at this moment in trees and a beautiful dual carriageway each way because the one that's there right now isn't working, and that's where the problem is. The congestion's ridiculous. So many people in our community have chosen to live in a small house, to be close to the city, to be able to commute to work. And that's, you know, the attraction was the attraction to them for the area. And some of the comments we've received back from the community is it's now faster to get in from West Ride into the city than it is from Rosehill into the city. And, you know, significant differences in distance and house prices, if you like, as well. But it's just impacting that commute so much, which is the daily life of people in our community.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I missed it. Do you add it as well?
So at Rosehill Public School, is there a sort of rear access that enables drop-off and pick-up at the school?
There is a car park that you can access from Darling Street, or if you come up Wellington Street, it's a one-way, and the name of that street, I think it might be Merton, but then it goes into a little car park area where you can drop off at the side, but you have to still be able to get there from Darling Street or Wellington. As far as
One, filter all of the stacks. Two, move the offset bus lane back to the curbside lane. And three, install a red light camera at the intersection of Darling Street and Victoria Road. Thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you, thank you very much for again appearing today. Talked about the red light camera between, what was it, Darling? Darling Street and Victoria Road. And now is that because of what you're witnessing and you're the the members of the school that parents are witnessing during drop off? Is that why you're calling for that?
Yes, absolutely. I have a quote, a couple of quotes here I can read about that that relate directly to it. One quote is, "The traffic in the mornings is sometimes so bad that it is hard to walk children to school. You need to weave around the cars blocking the crossings as they try to make their way onto and down Victoria Road. This is because there are too many lanes merging into one." May I read another statement?
Yes.
"The intersection of Darling Street and Victoria Road became dangerous for pedestrians when the interchange opened as confused and frustrated motorists blocked the crossings at the traffic lights and some continued to drive through them during the walk signal."
So basically, so you're the parents have witnessed behaviour you think that wasn't evident before the Rozell interchange. Could you talk about the 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 difference? If there has been, I'm asking whether there has been at that intersection?
Yeah, absolutely. There is concerns and I can even reference some people who had older children who used to walk to school unaccompanied, crossing the road before, who now walk them to school because there's, as mentioned in those statements, traffic that continues to either go through the walk lanes during the walk signal or blocks them. So kids and other community members have to weave through traffic. So it's dangerous and that has become apparent only after the interchange has opened.
Yeah. No, no, I'm not sure whether this, if it, do rat runs, rat runs impacting you in Rozell as well? People trying to avoid the areas that are more heavily impacted? Has that, is that the the situation?
There are a couple of streets that you can go along and in turn at that time illegally and get on to Victoria Road. And I have noticed myself and many other community members that that happens. However, it's dangerous to also do that because then you're turning on to the lane where the buses stop and then the dedicated bus lane because as you know, two lanes now pretty much dedicated to buses. So there are other vehicles, peninsula traffic coming along that way as well to avoid the congestion of trying to get on through the proper channels during the peak hours.
And what stories have you heard about the impact that it's had in terms of time? In terms of kids' drop off and pick up, has that also been a factor? I'm assuming drop off is is worse?
There are significant impacts and drop off is work, is worse because most people are trying to commute to work at a similar time. So I have stories from our community where they used to walk their kids to school and drive them when it was raining. And now the time is the same, whether it's walking or driving, because it takes so long. And also the traffic lights are so bad that they feel dangerous crossing the road a lot of the time. But many other members have mentioned that commute times have doubled or more than doubled. So they are just trying to avoid having to do it all or work from home more frequently.
And are you in a position to comment about the the lack of pedestrian infrastructure now on Victoria Road? And maybe even, I know we've got the active transport and but but people are coming next. But firstly, in terms of pedestrian crossing, we heard from the member for Balmain earlier today who has heard about people crossing between, it's where Victoria Road meets, I think, right at the end near Anzac Bridge, seven, Robert Street actually, 700 metre, having to get from one side to the other almost. Have you heard about that, those impacts on that stretch of Victoria Road? So I'm assuming that some of the lights where pedestrians were able to cross aren't there anymore, for starters. Is that correct?
I can't comment on the one right near Victoria Road. I do believe that there used to be crossing, there isn't a crossing anymore. However, I have seen people running across the road because that's a frustration point as well. What I can tell you is that there is so much traffic now that was never there before. And what the community believes they were promised has not been delivered. And as I mentioned before, there are no significant positive impacts from the Rozell interchange opening. There seems to be quite numerous negative impacts, including that safety of our pedestrians, which is why we're asking for the red light camera at Victoria Road to discourage motorists for continuing across that intersection and to provide safe passage for the kids.
What, from your perspective, whether you were involved in the earliest stages of the Rozell interchange, you know, the approvals process, design phase, consultation phase, what was the community promised?
It's, this is from community feedback rather than direct involvement. But at that time, we were promised an enhancement, if anything, to our community. It would be that there would be less traffic above ground and most traffic would be pushed underneath. So it'd be great if we would be able to get some numbers on what is the above ground traffic now? And what is the traffic numbers below ground in the tunnels? And has that been delivered as promised? Or is there an overall increase in the number of traffic, in number of vehicular traffic? And therefore, what's it percentage wise? Because at the moment, just even looking without numbered data, it looks significantly more congested than ever before above ground, yet the tunnel traffic seems to be free flowing.
Thank you. Questions from the government? Yeah, Dr Kane.
Thank you so much for coming in and for representing the community, the school community. I must confess, I'm not a local to the area, so I'm trying to get my head around and looking at the maps and whatnot. So can you, so in terms of the students at your school and the where they're drawn from, can you explain a bit because you seem to, yeah, it would just be helpful for me if you could sort of contextualise a bit where parents and students are coming from?
Yeah, absolutely. So Rozell Public School, as you may be aware, sits just slightly offset from Victoria Road and faces Darling Street, which is sort of a high street, if you like. And the school catchment is on that peninsula side, so on the, yeah, the peninsula side and extends to the other side of Victoria Road also. So we have many, many, many students that have to cross that road, that have to cross Victoria Road, let me be very clear, to get on to the other side and therefore access to school at all each day.
Thank you, that's helpful. And again, it's just trying to go off, go off a map. What what surrounds the public school?
Mostly retail shops and there's a little bit of, I believe, I don't want to say industrial, but I think it's industrial zoned at the back where there's, you know, a car service place and the storage facility. Otherwise, it's predominantly residential houses and then the high street full of retail shops.
Thank you. Sorry, just contextual for my understanding. Thank you.
You were talking about Rozell, just quickly in terms of Rozell, the, sorry, Victoria Road. There's been a lot of promise. I think that was, that was part of the attraction, wasn't it? For the local community to begin with, that Rozell, I think we heard today that it would be this incredible boulevard of for pedestrians and cyclists and trees, yes, and trees. And that would have been incredible. Hopefully it will still happen. I'm interested to know what you know about that. But for the students, so I wasn't aware of the 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 students needing to cross Victoria Road, that's very significant. Firstly, yes, how much is that impacting you? And how important is it that that boulevardication, boulevardification of Victoria Road occurs?
I think at the moment, the boulevard is the furthest thing from our minds. We're not really interested right at this moment in trees and a beautiful, you know, dual carriageway each way because the one that's there right now isn't working. And that's where the problem is. The congestion's ridiculous. So many people in our community have chosen to live in a small house, to be close to the city, to be able to commute to work. And that's, you know, the attraction was the attraction to them for the area. And some of the comments we've received back from the community is it's now faster to get in from West Ride into the city than it is from Rozell into the city. And, you know, significant differences in distance and house prices, if you if you like as well. But it's just impacting that commute so much, which is the daily life of people in our community.
Thank you. I'm sorry, missed it, did Adam as well?
Is, at Rozell Public School, is there a sort of rear access that enables drop off and pickup at the school?
There is a car park that you can access from Darling Street. Or if you come up Wellington Street, it's a one-way, and the name of that street, I think it might be Merton, but then it goes into a little car park area where you can drop off at the side. But you have to still be able to get there from Darling Street or Wellington. As far as the rest of Wellington Street goes, there is a bus stop right outside the back of the school there. And that's not a safe position place to drop off children. And then after the bus stop, it's no stopping. And that's where the the Bridge Hotel is that goes on to the corner of Wellington Street and Victoria Road.
Right, I see. And so in terms of, you say it's difficult to get access to the school for drop off purposes. So where is the bank up of traffic? Is it along Darling Street? Is that the issue?
Absolutely. Yeah, the the traffic along Darling Street at the moment in, along the whole of the Balmain Peninsula, Balmain Rozell Peninsula, you can go down to the London Pub, which is sort of getting towards East Balmain and sit in traffic from around 7:15 in the morning for 25 minutes just to try and get up the other end of Darling Street, if that's where you're headed. So it just, it's banked up. And then you obviously have cars turning on from the side streets, trying to get on to Darling Street to get anywhere near the school to drop their kids off. So it's just incredibly heavily congested because most of them are trying to either get on to Victoria Road and go into the city, or they're coming in the other direction along Darling Street, trying to get across Victoria Road to drop off their children. And it's just congested in all directions.
Is there much queuing across the intersection from, so on Victoria Road, cars ending up in the middle of the intersection because they're trying to get across and then that creating a blockage for the north-south from along Darling Street? Is that?
The main blockage, I think cars tend to leave just enough room for the cars going across Darling Street, one side and the other. But it's the pedestrian crossings that they're blocking in order to do that. So if you like, there's a square and this way is Darling Street. The cars will, they can still get across, but the cars coming along Victoria Road will come and just kind of just leave enough room for Darling Street to go through. But then they're sitting right where our students and communities are trying to cross the road from one side of Victoria Road to the other.
And for those who are dropping off, is their only option to then head back on to Darling Street to get back on to Victoria Road? Or is there another way they can get back on to Victoria Road?
So you can, if you are on Darling Street and you go into the school, sort of the car park, that's not the schools, but the community car park there, that's a one-way street, so you have to come back out to Darling. And then either turn and go right and go along Darling to Victoria Road or go left, go down another one-way street, which is Nelson, and then on to Wellington Street. And from Wellington, you can either go right or left on to Victoria Road.
Right, I see.
And when you're on Wellington and you take a right, there's an unfiltered huge airstack right there, which I'll just take this moment to point out, it's much lower ground level than where the school is. And we were told, I believe the community was told, that they will both be at ground level. However, given when we look at it on a geographical map, one is much, the school is much higher than the base of the airstack. So we believe we're getting a lot of air from that as well.
Particular direction, it may blow the emissions towards the school.
The PNC have been paying for air quality monitoring on site for some years now.
And what's that uncovered?
Well, it's uncovered that we get alarms quite often that blow, you know, air into the school. It is not of good quality, is below the quality standards. However, there's nothing we can do about it when those alarms are received other than kind of know that that's what's happening because we don't have sealed classrooms. So everything that's inside is effectively outside to some extent. And also we have no recourse or no plan of action in what to do about it because as I mentioned previously, the stacks are unfiltered and we would really like them to be filtered.
And so coming back to the question about.
Anthony, sorry, can you?
Oh, sorry. Coming back to the question about children crossing Victoria Road. I mean, ultimately, what's the solution, do you think?
How long is a piece of string? I think there is so many options here about crossing Victoria Road. I think an immediate one that could be implemented is that red light speed camera to dissuade motorists for continuing across the crossings when the red light is there. This red light camera has been promised to our community twice in the past two years. And we've even received word that it would be in by last July. Still not there.
Who was it promised by?
I'd have to get back to you on that one. But, yeah, I will. Sorry.
We can get back to you in terms of the detail.
Beyond the red light camera, what else can be done?
Oh, well, let's move the bus lane back to where it belongs, right next to the curb, to create more room for traffic so that there's less need for that kind of trying to squeeze in and really, you know, I know what it's like to be a motorist as well. You want to be able to get where you're going. And it's very frustrating being in that position, having two lanes essentially for the bus, two lanes for traffic, which then some split and can go right. And then two go on to Anzac Bridge, but then they merge again with the bus lane. So three lanes then effectively merge into one. And then when they get on to Anzac, they merge again with the lane that's already there. So it just creates this huge blockage and it just banks up. And it doesn't just affect our community, it also goes all the way back to Drumoyne and Gladesville.
So the council has suggested that, you know, that one of the solutions is enhance public transport. You know, getting, encouraging people to change transport modes from cars to public transport or active transport. Is that something that you think would be amenable for parents with kids that they have to drop off at school?
I think public transport is always something that can be improved. However, I can't speak for how everyone in our community, how their lives work and whether or not public transport actually feeds into where they need to be going that day. If they've got to pick their kids up with sporting equipment and go to activities after school, that's not always something that can occur with access via public transport. And I think the best way is to provide, the public transport, I think, is working reasonably well as it is. However, there's not enough room for the motorists. So, you know, that saying from years ago, "The road is there to share", it doesn't really feel like that's happening at the moment. It feels like it's prioritised for toll-paying motorists. And it's also prioritising two entire lanes for public transport.
Can I ask a follow-up about buses?
Sure.
That's the sort of public transport option we were just talking about to get largely to the city, the commuter one. Is there a sort of a bus option for kids to get to school in the local area? Because we're talking about parent drop, parental drop offs. Is there public, you know, is there a bus service essentially? And has that been affected?
There's not a school dedicated bus. However, we are a primary school. So a lot of parents don't feel comfortable with letting younger children catch a public bus to school at this age. I know that I'm not with my children. Okay.
It's a problem for the morning, not in the afternoon?
It's a problem all the time, however, much more noticeable in the morning. The afternoon, it depends what day it is. So I can tell you very easily that Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday are very popular with people going into the city and Thursday, Friday, not as much.
Right.
Can I, I'll just check, we've got from the opposition, we've got Mr Fang there. Can I just check if you've got any questions for this witness, Mr Fang?
I just wanted to ask actually about bus services. And we know that there's been a lot of relation to, oh, can you hear me?
No, it's better now.
Oh, sorry. We know there's been a lot of impact in relation to bus services in the areas around the Rozell interchange area. And with kids trying to get to school, has there been an impact in relation to the way that the kids have had to, I guess, arrive in the morning and plan their day? Has it had an impact on families trying to get kids to school?
So I do have some feedback in regards to parents who are commuting via bus to school, who walk their children to school. And then their bus commute time has also increased because, as I mentioned, there are so many lanes, sort of essentially four lanes, two of them for the bus, merging with the other two lanes of traffic, then merging again as they go on to Anzac Bridge. So even though the bus or public transport is prioritised for a portion of Victoria Road travel, it's then heavily impacted with the rest of commuter traffic as soon as it goes on to Anzac Bridge. So that affects the lives of the people in our community commuting to work and back.
Right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I've also got a question about the kind of walkability and cycleability of the area because it's Rozell Public School, as you're saying, with smaller houses. The streets are kind of very walkable. Has it impacted, well, it could go either way, actually. It could, it could impact on the the safety of people cycling, but it could potentially also force more families to maybe walk their kids to school because the traffic's been so bad. Have you seen any impact on any of that? Care to comment?
I can't comment on cyclists. We don't have dedicated cycle lanes as Victoria Road does. So that's sort of a, I can't really comment on that one. And I'm not a cyclist myself and haven't had any direct feedback from the community. As far as walking to school, it really depends on what the situation of each individual household is. So those who can walk, sorry, work from home on those days, I believe they're walking to their children to school more often. However, in times of inclement weather, such as yesterday, it's desired. You know, you want to, a lot of them want to pick their kids up and be able to do so freely and easily at those times and then impacted very much by the traffic conditions. So I think being a very close-knit, small community, vast majority of people walk their kids to school anyway, if they can.
Yeah, thank you. We heard from members of the local business chambers as witnesses beforehand who were telling us about the impact that this, the interchange and now the congested traffic has had on businesses. Do you think that that's the case for the, I suppose, the suburb all round? Like they were saying, it's almost like being rebranded, there's this reputational damage. I don't want to say that. I was almost afraid to put that into words. But that's what they're submitting. Have you heard any feedback on, about that in terms of being a Rozell resident?
Yeah, absolutely. So prior to coming here today, just for your information, we put a call out to the community to receive feedback. And there definitely has been comments about, from local business owners, because we have many of them in our school community as well. And the comments are along the lines of, and this is a summary of their comments, that there's less foot traffic now, the high congestion of cars and peak hour traffic has resulted in fewer visitors to our area and therefore reduced retail sales. And our local businesses are struggling. That has been, yeah, that's a summary of what I've been told.
Thank you. I was wondering also with that, with that survey and that feedback, whether you wouldn't mind tabling that. So we also had a, had the copy of all of the feedback? Would that be okay, do you think?
Let me double check with everyone who submitted first and then I'll be happy to as long as they're okay.
Great, thank you. Are there any other questions for this witness? No, thank you so much for appearing today. The secretary will be in touch with you with anything you've taken on notice, such as that. And yeah, thanks for representing your community.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, if we're right to go, we'll begin by firstly getting you all sworn in. But welcome to this last session this afternoon before our public forum. We'll start with you, Mr McNeil. If you could please state your name and position, title and swear either an oath or an affirmation. I understand you will have those words before you. Thank you.
Yes, I'm John McNeil. I represent the Inner West Bicycle Coalition. I'm also the Secretary of Better Streets Australia. And I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thanks so much. Mr Tonkin?
Neil Tonkin, I'm the advocacy coordinator for Inner West Bicycle Coalition. I'm swearing on the Bible. I swear that the evidence now about to be given to me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thank you so much. Mr McLean?
Thank you, Chair. Peter McLean from Bicycle New South Wales, CEO of Bicycle New South Wales. I swear that the evidence now about to be given to, by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thank you. And Ms Bickford?
Hello, I'm Sarah Bickford, the Active Transport Planner at Bicycle New South Wales. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Great, thanks so much. And I assume there are short opening statements to make. So from the Inner West Bicycle Coalition, who's making that one?
Yes, I'm making it.
Great.
The bicycle is the most space-efficient transport mode. It requires no more energy than a human's normal food intake, does not cause environmental damage, improves human health and is relatively inexpensive, thus providing broad access to ownership. In crowded cities, it's an essential mode of transport. Countries like Denmark, the Netherlands, Belgium, Germany, France and Italy have embraced its widespread use. There, cycle facilities blend into the street environment as a standard provision with increasing prevalence. In Australia, however, state and federal governments still perceive cycling merely as a recreational activity, with policies and infrastructure funding reflecting this stance. Until World War II, the bicycle was common on Sydney streets, offering many an easy, low-cost mode of transport. Conversely, the private motorcar is space inefficient, consumes toxic fossil fuels, offers scant health benefits and is costly. Its convenience is alluring, which seems to determine governments not questioning or they don't want to question its prevalence. Minimal effort is invested in facilitating bicycles, a crucial element of active transport. The ultimate impact of the Rozell interchange and Parklands echoes these tendencies. Motorways often overwhelm the Rozell, Balmain, Lilyfield and Annandale areas. A large children's playground of cycleways in the Parklands has been established, yet it lacks proper connections to the adjacent suburbs. These suburbs, with their dense settlement patterns, are ideal for a coherent, connected cycleway network to enable healthy mobility for residents. It's noteworthy that most car trips in the Inner West are under five kilometres. It's a symptom of car-centric road planning. Our report elaborates on how planning and transport, both those state departments, have overlooked active transport in the West Connect project. Existing cycleways have been disrupted, pathways end abruptly at curbs and cycling facility improvements are an afterthought. As a result, the contractors building interchange at Parklands have ignored our pleas for the sensible cycle facility continuation and enhancements. Cycle facilities could be implemented at a fraction of a motorway cost. We advocate for a metro-style public transport system seamlessly integrated with walking and cycling facilities, which would have benefited our vibrant Inner West. Instead, we are burdened with an ill-fitting urban motorway, causing widespread dissatisfaction and increased stress. The apparent sole beneficiary of the Rozell interchange is the private owner. Our report offers practical recommendations for enhancing current cycling facilities through judicious civic planning at a significantly lower cost than this motorway. It shows dangers to cyclists due to poor design, lack of allocated space, inappropriate speed limits and missing links to cycle destinations. Our recommendations strongly indicate that separated paths and greater space for cyclists are possible, actually possible, coordinated with lower prevailing speed limits. We will welcome a site inspection by transport for New South Wales officials who have the authority to analyse and implement our suggestions.
Thank you very much. Mr McLean, do you also, on behalf of Bicycle New South Wales, I assume?
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Bicycle New South Wales believes that West Connects has failed at many levels. The Rozell interchange is just one cog of an expensive, destructive, traffic-induced and carbon-intensive project that has been divided, that has divided communities and entrenched car dependency for future generations. The tendencies of this project keep spreading across the city as more roads are widening to feed West Connects. The shocking mess of the Wink Ferryway Corridor does not include game-changing upgrades to the active transport network. Sydney's Gateway Project has concreted over critical opportunities to connect the airport to the Inner West. The Western distributor changes will bring more traffic into Pemont, running roughshod over decades of hard work to improve pedestrian amenity. But no bureaucrats or politicians have been able to stand up to the juggernaut and press pause on these projects. Urban motorways also come at a tremendous cost. West Connects is, has cost sixteen point eight billion dollars and another five point nine billion has been spent on related projects such as Warringa Freeway and the Airport Gateway. And now we have a commitment from government to subsidise tolls on the basis of equity, sucking another five hundred and sixty one million dollars from transport and housing projects that might actually improve equitable access of housing for Sydney's residents. The opportunity cost is also huge. Hectares of land consumed that can no longer be used for housing and parks, billions of dollars squandered that could have been setting up Sydney as an amazing bicycle attraction and system and of course to rebuild footpaths for safer walking. The precedent set by Rosehill Interchange is a really dangerous one. Major projects will avoid being delivered, well, major projects will avoid delivering community benefits. They are not held to account when conditions of approval are not met. And certainly in our opinion, we definitely believe that they have not been met, some of them on this project. They are allowed to exacerbate transport and social inequity while ignoring widespread state government goals such as net zero twenty fifty. They embed and prioritise vehicle traffic into Sydney's transport system, which is extremely hard to undo. We have made ten recommendations to, for the committee in our submission and we ask all parties to refer to these. We also ask for the New South Wales Government to investigate, to instigate a complete and systematic overhaul of transport for New South Wales. This must include enshrining the purpose, the purpose of transport for New South Wales legislation to serve all road users and fundamentally a shift from a traffic modelling to a vision and validate approach now embedded in forward thinking transport planning processes. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to uh turn firstly to the issue of consultation with um bicycle stakeholders, um particularly in the, not the design phase, I think the design potential is well and truly, truly done. But I I am interested in that. Um you say in your submission that you advocated for um the space, you know, this Victoria Road particularly, to reduce uh the space there, I think, in terms of Bicycle New South Wales. What involvement did you have around, we'll just stick with Rosehill Interchange um at this point? As an organisation, what consultation did you have during the the design and approvals and consultation phase broadly?
For Bicycle New South Wales?
Yes, please.
Uh so we we were certainly involved in uh as a required body to be consulted with um by the actual um the the contractors that were delivering Rosehill Interchange. Um that in certainly my opinion was was done at quite a superficial level, um which uh wasn't, I guess, a, wasn't, wasn't genuine consultation. Uh so.
Can you expand upon that a little bit more? Like um when you're saying it wasn't uh genuine and it was superficial, do you, do you remember exactly what it was? Do you have that detail?
Well, I might let others comment on that as well, but essentially it was, it was very sort of superficial in terms of not detailed. It was um we, we often get briefings and updates, but it's not a two way conversation. It's not two way communication. Uh and that's fundamentally um not, not as in depth or as genuine as, as certainly we would feel, um particularly when we've got some really good ideas to share. But Sarah, you might.
Right about Neil, Neil in particular was, was very much at the coalface of this process in the early days of the interchange design and planning, so.
Great, Mr Tonkin, Mr.
Okay, I was there. I attended some meetings where Bicycle New South Wales employee was um at, we had site inspections and we attended a couple of briefings um in the offices down at Lilyfield. Basically, they were very good at telling us what they were doing.
Is this transurban or transport for New South Wales?
It's interesting. I think it would have been um John Holland's people running this so called community consultation process. Uh it was quite a while before anybody from Transport for New South Wales appeared. Um we had site inspections with some people uh on Victoria Road particularly, where there's these couple of slip lanes have been built so that majors can just gaily cut straight across our bike path. Um we were just told, no, no, this is how, this is in the plans and it's all been decided, that's it. So as far as I'm concerned, the community consultation process was um a bit like a lot of these other motorways, a bit of a sham. Uh and we were sort of listened to, but we were also told that that's not in the plans and that's it. Well, we were just trying to give us some advice and we were pretty annoyed. Also, during the early construction stage, a lot of our bits and pieces of relatively good cycleway were removed. I mean, the bridge across uh Victoria Road at the end of Lilyfield Road and then also the Beattie Bush Bridge that goes across further towards um White Bay. Uh all that was just summarily removed. Okay, we were given notice, but that was a fundamental, uh fundamentally important cycleway to get into the city. And there were a lot of commuter bike people going to the city. In fact, the Anzac Bridge approach to the city is probably the second busiest cycle corridor in any, in any one morning. Okay, after the Harbour Bridge. So first of all, we had our existing cycleways disrupted. And then secondly, during this construction phase, we were told you just had to suck it and see, that's it, you know? We, this is what we're doing. And they didn't actually even comply with um the Austro standards as far as what you do with workplaces. So there were things there where, where they were doing silly things, like they put up signs saying, look up and live. That's a sign for the electricians so that they don't um get their cranes tangled up in the wires. Looking, looking down is very important if you're a cyclist because often we had to ride across uh steel plates, all sorts of mess and, and construction stuff on their sort of cobbled together routes, which the routes just said pedestrians, we don't exist, we're sort of not part of the equation apparently, anyway. So all I'm saying is that during construction, it wasn't a great um time for us. And also any suggestions we had were not particularly well listened to.
Can I ask about the, those, uh the cycleways over uh Victoria Road and the other one at the end of Anzac Bridge that you mentioned? I was a Balmain, a peninsula resident for, for, for three years, um almost two decades ago now actually. Um but did cycle into work uh as well occasionally, so I know exactly where you're talking about. Is it being replaced, is it?
Uh well, it's being replaced by a rather roundabout route, convoluted route where you, you go a little bit. Say if you come from Balmain, um you can go towards Anzac Bridge and you can loop underneath and go back uh through the Parklands to the west. So that, those cyclists that come from the west, there's a lot of them come up from Lilyfield Road. They come from uh Ashfield. You'd be surprised, we've actually done counts and found all sorts of people come from really weird destinations, miles away to the west. So these are the rusted on commuters, there's one, there's one particular type of cyclists. And they, they've had their route disrupted completely by uh all these construction vehicles parked along Lilyfield Road. Uh we were given to understand that um the construction people would all be, their parking of their vehicles would be on site. Uh they weren't, they were all stuck along Lilyfield Road, so you had car doors flinging open left, right and centre. Um we have a, a, a cycle lane on Lilyfield Road that was, well, it was how, how it was back in the nineties. It was adequate, sort of adequate. But then of course with all these parked vehicles there, uh it's not much fun on a wet, uh wet cold morning, dealing with all these construction types jumping in and out of their youths or whatever. Uh so that, that was quite disruptive, that whole phase of construction. And then there were various phases where obviously they had to build certain elements of the, the route, like a new bridge over Victoria Road, over the old railway line, various things. So we were directed in all sorts of convoluted ways around the site. It was like that they, they didn't really want us there, that was obvious, but our, our treatment was um not first rate. That's all I'd say.
Can I just clarify, so there was a over, overpass was there from the sort of James Craig roadside a- across the, the um City West Link that connected you to?
Uh there was a, I've passed called the Beattie, Beattie Bush Bridge.
Yeah.
And basically it was a curved bridge, cost twenty million dollars at the time and I think the RTA put it in to alleviate problems they had with traffic coming off the Harbour Bridge. They wanted an extra lane on the City West Link. So in doing so, they took away our cycleway on the, on the sort of um white or the Rosehill Bay side. So that bridge was very useful for us because it enabled people to come from Balmain and go straight over towards uh Anandale. Well, that bridge was removed because the whole intersection, as we all know now, is much wider. We've got all these lanes coming in and out from the motorway, coming from the Iron Cove Link, et cetera. Uh so that, that whole.
So was there any consultation about the removal of that bridge?
No, just the top, that's what was going to be in the plan.
And is, so there's no now, no connection?
No, no direct connection. We've got to reroute ourselves around a longer way.
To, to the other side, is there a tunnel or so like?
No, there's no, no, there's, there's a, okay. If you're coming from Anandale, say, you know, there's, there's two Anzac men sitting on the bridge, right?
Mm.
Well, when you come from Anandale, you can loop around underneath uh James Craig Road and you come up and you can go, uh I think it's up onto the other, onto the northern side of the Anzac Bridge and then go west and then go uh through a series of underpasses under the railway and then go off to Anandale. So that particular aspect of it, long term, that's, that's bad. I mean, there are other aspects of the project that are better, there's two north-south links. Um but that particular aspect is no good. And also, I think in terms of linkages to the west, the business of putting a, some so called disability ramps out on a, on a curve, on a hill on, at Ryan Street on Lilyfield Road is diabolical. Obviously, they, they didn't want us near there because they've got their wonderful management facility for the motorway jammed up against the tramway, tram works as well. So all that area to the west, they didn't really know what to do with it. So they just dumped us out of Lilyfield Road. Well, that's been not a good outcome at present and it really annoys us extremely because basically we knew that lots of people would have come from the west to try to get to the city. And that, that major link is now being treated as just a little plastic curb ramp. Well, not good enough, so good, so.
Could I ask, Mr McLean?
Sorry, I, it's it.
Submission.
Chair.
Oh.
Uh Mr Fang's jumping in, we'll, we'll go to um Mr, Mr Fang.
All right.
Uh yes, Miss Adam did, the Adam just did have a question, but you go where's? So we can't hear you, start again, start again.
Apologies, I'm, I'm just having a look at the overhead of um near Lilyfield Road and there, there appears to be a number of um connections that cross the motorway. Um there's obviously the, the connection on um Catherine Street, but there's also then, as you go further up towards the Parklands, is, there's an actual, looks like commuter bridge and there's cycleways along the Parklands. Haven't they indeed actually increased the access for cyclists along that area?
Who wants to answer that one, Mr Tonkin or?
Yes, uh they have actually made the uh north-south route across the ex rail yards better. But what we're contending is that the route east-west from, say, Orthon Canal along Lilyfield Road and onto the Anzac Bridge has not been improved, it's been made worse.
There's also alternate routes, like you said, that you can go around, um and I sort of know the area slightly. Um you can go sort of down towards the, the fish markets and come around that area and then sort of head back into the city. Um anyway, so instead of going along the Anzac Bridge, you've actually got a more level, flat route um that follows um along, along the east-west corridor, what are you talking about?
Well, we've always had the route that goes around the, past the fish markets. I'd have to advance that that's not a particularly attractive route for people who are trying to get to work on time. Okay, it's fine to, to, to tool around there, that's very nice, it's pleasant. But it's uh, it depends on where you work in the city, I guess. But it's often um quite awkward, there's various left and right turns in amongst the waterways, particularly past, I think it's Bell, Bellview House, I think it is on the corner. Um so that's always been there, that's not been disrupted, we don't have any problem with that uh as a result of the motorway. What we're contending is that this motorway has been dumped right in the rail yards where we actually have put forward other ideas that you could have a much better west-east west route. And in fact, it just hasn't occurred, the western end of the thing is hopeless. The eastern end is fine, it, it makes, it joins with the Anzac Bridge and as you've pointed out, there are two dedicated uh walking and cycle connections across the rail, the rail yards, that's fine. But the actual Lilyfield Road route itself uh is problematical. We've been sitting around waiting for the council for the last eight years to improve it. They've been sitting around waiting for what West Connects is going to do. Uh we still have not got resolution, they're coming up with another consultant that have been deliberating excessively in our view and still there are aspects of the Lilyfield Road route that are inadequate in our minds. We would have thought that this project, being something big that Transport for New South Wales is doing, would have actually thought about the implications of active transport and how it could be improved, as we say, as a, at a fraction of the cost of the, whatever how many billion dollars the Rosehill Interchange cost. Uh it hasn't, it's just been left on the western end with a plastic ramp going onto the, onto the road. With no, no warning to any matrix that people might want to get into it or what might, might want to emerge from the Parklands. So that's, that's a very significant problem for us. Um people might find it nice to ride around the path, pathlands or parklands with the nice paths. But if you've got family and kids and you suddenly then want to get home and want to get back onto Lilyfield Road, you're presented with vastly different traffic conditions than a nice carefully manufactured paths within the Parklands. And it's not an unreasonable thing for people to want to actually get to the Parklands. Uh there are not enough crossings of Lilyfield Road. There's um, as I said, the one at Ryan Street is, is laughable. Um there'll be a lot of people wanting to come from Eastern Park. There's no crossing there, there's a nice big access area with bollards and a nice smooth lip to ride across, but you can't get from Eastern Park across. There must be lots of people with kids who want to ride their bikes uh in, in the Parklands. Uh there's no safe way, we're, we're suggesting, if you look in our report, we are suggesting that there should be uh modern style pedestrian, combined pedestrian and bike crossings, parallel crossings, uh for people to access the Parklands. There's no point having a nice Parklands if you're everybody's going to drive there because we all know there will be quite big uh parking problems along Lilyfield Road. So it would be sensible for people who want to get there and want to ride their bikes around the Parklands to be able to ride to the Parklands from the surrounding suburbs.
Thank you.
I'm just looking at the overhead, uh from the southern part of that um Eastern Park, um there's a bollarded area that you can actually enter then onto the, to the halfways uh across Lilyfield Road. How do you, how do you indicate that that's unsafe?
Do I think that's unsafe? Yes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, I'm curious as to how you.
Why, why I think it's unsafe?
You're at any number of crossing points from Eastern Park onto the, the new Parklands where you cross Lilyfield Road, why, why would you indicate that that's unsafe?
Because it's just beyond a bend where Denison Road comes down. Uh if you're taking, I mean, this, surely the Parklands is a place where families would want to take their kids on their bikes. What are they supposed to do, drive down with their bikes on the back of the cars? Take the bikes off and ride around the Parklands like Centennial Park or something? I mean, we're trying to have the place uh safer. Lilyfield Road has still got a fifty k speed limit on it. It's not unusual to want to get across the road. If you're confronted by somebody who's just driven their car off the Anzac Bridge, turned left onto Lilyfield Road and tuteling along there at fifty and then they're suddenly confronted by some little toddler on his um minibike trying to get across, surely that's a bit of a recipe for some sort of uh safety problem, don't you think?
No, I don't. I think that what you're trying to do is that.
Order, 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 Mr DeAdam.
You've got, you've got a, no, I, look, I'm just being honest. I mean, I'm looking at what you're indicating are problems. I'm not seeing problems, I'm seeing that there's been quite a lot of integration for uh active transport in and around the Parklands. I can see.
Is that a question?
Transport route on that way. I'm just, I'm indicating that um.
Perhaps the, perhaps the Bicycle Coalition people could invite committee members to jump on a bike and you can show us all the uh.
That is my last day, that's what I said.
Mr Fang can come with us.
Yeah, please.
But I've, I've not seen exactly what the issues are.
I'm really happy to uh uh have a site tour with you, Mr Fang.
Thanks, Mr, thanks, Mr, thanks, Mr Fang. Uh we will now hear from uh, yeah, we go back to government questions.
I wanted to ask, Mr McLean, in your submission, uh you, uh one of your points is number three, a suggestion about putting uh bike lanes on either side of Victoria Road. Um I know you're in the gallery for the. Um, I know you're in the gallery for the previous witness's evidence, uh, Miss Berryman. And, uh, she, she, you know, uh, made a comment about the, uh, apportionment of road for users and was not particularly happy with, uh, having two lanes effectively dedicated to public transport. I suppose I, and I'm a supporter of bikes and bike lanes. I'm a cyclist myself. But in the circumstance where you've got, uh, views like the one expressed by Miss Berryman, where there's great concern about traffic, my question is, how do we get a social licence to be able to implement that process when all the pressure, uh, in terms of the sort of advocacy that's coming before this committee is really towards finding a solution around, uh, enabling people to drive more freely down the roads rather than constrain, uh, further the road's access for vehicles?
It, um, it comes down to whether or not we want to plan for a environment and a community that is choked up by motor vehicles and encourages people to be driving five kilometres and less with an inefficient vehicle. I'm all for motor vehicles and they're really useful tools when you've got to drive medium and longer term distances. Driving a vehicle five kilometres and less is very inefficient, uh, and costly to our environment and our community and our transport network. So the, the, the real issue is, yeah, we've got over two million car trips in Sydney every single day alone. That's two kilometres and less. What we're trying to get is the mode shift with that. We're not anti-car, but we are anti-driving two kilometres and less because it's totally inefficient. So we want to see a mode shift and we want to see a, uh, you know, build it and they will come. And you build the roads, widen the roads, and the motorists will continue to come and populate that road space. Build some efficient, effective, safe, separated cycleways and they will also come. And we've got plenty of great examples, um, in Sydney and indeed right around the globe around how we can, um, increase that mode shift by putting in place, um, safe, separated, uh, cycleways for bicycle users. Because indeed you can get from this location into the city in quite comfortably 15 minutes. You just have to be on a bike and you cannot do that in a car. And in the foreseeable future, you will not be able to do that in the car. And I'd even, uh, challenge people that will never be able to do that in the car.
Do you accept that, I mean, bicycle, uh, travel, active transport, uh, is, uh, accessible only to a subset of all?
No.
I mean, there are, there are elderly people who need transport, uh, you know, transporting young children. Uh, like these are genuine, uh, needs of transport users. And a bicycle just can't satisfy that need adequately.
I, yeah, I would definitely, uh, not support that, um, viewpoint. I strongly believe with the incredible technology and adapt, adaptability of active transport devices, particularly e-bikes and e-cargo bikes. I transport my two young daughters with my e-bike, um, quite significant distances. I don't expect everyone to do that. But in short distances, you can easily transport with, with, with an e-bike, that is, um, your, your young children, um, and, and your groceries and light cargo. Um, there's really well-designed devices out there that are very safe, very easy to ride. We've got members of Bicycle New South Wales over 80 years old who, um, aren't even on e-bikes. They're still, uh, they're still on, on traditional pedal bikes. But with the advent of e-bikes, we're seeing more and more adaptability and usability of young people, um, older people, beginners, less able people with knee ligament damages, all sorts of, um, challenges with their mobility are able to, uh, access these devices and certainly participate in an equitable transport network.
Dr. Kane.
Thank you. Uh, thank you all for your submissions, but particularly, uh, Mr. MacNeil and Mr. Tomkin. I was extremely impressed with your submission in the level of detail that you went into and I, and I thank you for that. It's refreshing to have very specific recommendations, um, given. And I do also appreciate the amount of effort that would have gone into collating all of that. And I have two related questions. One, and I couldn't see, and perhaps forgive me, it might have been in the, in the preface. Has that been shared with others, for example, Transport for New South Wales or the council? Those recommendations, those very specific recommendations? And secondly, um, you've got 31 of them. Are, are you able to prioritise them in terms of biggest impact, that kind of thing? So there's 31.
First of all, I circulated this, uh, not only to this, um, inquiry, but I sent a copy to, um, John Graham, Joe Halen, and, um, I've forgotten the, uh, planning minister's name because planning's implicated in this. There were some very poor, Mr. Scully, thank you. There were some very poor recommendations in the EIS where it just said, oh, well, that active transport stuff, the peripheral stuff can be just done by others, others with the local councils. As we all know, local councils don't have very much capital expenditure budgets. They rely upon the state government. Okay, so all those people were told. Also, I've circulated this to, uh, the Inner West Council, all the councillors. And on top of that, we've also prepared a, um, response because they're doing a master plan for, um, Rosel Parklands. And the content is very similar to what is in this.
And in terms of prioritisation, is there anything you could?
Okay, well, I, I would say, um, yes, I'm, I'm responding to the fact that Victoria Road is very poorly handled. The conditions, they're rubbish. They, they wanted to put some sort of a route between, uh, Springside Street and Robert Street, which went up and down and over the ridges of Rosel on the south side of Victoria Road. So it would be a very big priority of us expecting you, the government, to do something about putting a good quality cycle route on the north side of Victoria Road. That involves invoking the draft, um, master plan, I think, local master plan for Rosel. And I, I know, I take note of what the PNC person has talked about with the lanes on Victoria Road. Because obviously there will be some sort of, um, trading having to happen about the bus lanes, the car lanes, and a little bit of an extra lane space for us. Currently, the bike route that goes from Iron Cove Bridge to the Crescent, uh, is littered with, uh, obstructions. We have all sorts of massive big signs plonked there and it's right in the bike path. We've got a couple of bus stops where you can't even ride around the back of them. Riding around the back of a bus stop is the approved way to le- lessen the conflict with bus patrons. They're looking this way for the bus and they don't, they don't see some cyclists coming the other way. We've got sympathy for those, those bus patrons. It's not fun having a bike cut straight through the queue of people trying to get on the next five, 501 bus or whatever it is. So that, that's conflict happening that it doesn't need to happen. We're not actually asking for a lot of space. We're probably asking for one traffic lanes worth of space on Victoria Road. Now, I know John Graham, he knew what was going to happen with all this motor congestion that's going on as a result of the interchange. And so we've already written to him saying, right, well, you need to implement this Rosel Town Centre master plan, which is going to transform, uh, that section of Victoria Road into something livable. It's a traffic sewer at present. So that, that is a big priority in terms of what we're talking about here. I think other things are, intersections further to the west are priorities for us because you cannot get easily from Lykett into the parklands. There's intersections that the RTA built years ago with smart cost-cutting measures. They didn't put, uh, pedestrian crossings on either side of the intersection. The corner of Belmont Road and City West Link and Lillifield Road is a prime example. When a big project like this comes along, there's lots of money attached to it. And we often look to that money. It's not, it's not going to kill the project to have a little bit of money spent on fixing up some local things. Now, our, our contention with this parklands is that, yeah, you can get to it from the east. That's great. But you can't get to it very well from the west. And that is a major, uh, cycle route, major commuting cycle route out towards the Hawthorn Canal. You've got the Greenway at Hawthorn Canal and you've got all sorts of other cycle routes coming from Canada Bay and further, points further west. So they would be two priorities, two big things that I think could be addressed. I know we've had some discussion about the entrances to the parklands. That would be another, the next priority because we think it's just, um, it's not so good enough. If, if you're trying to, uh, make the area amenable to people to take their kids, you just can't have bits of Lillifield Road with a speed of 50 k's an hour. It's got to be at least 40 or 30, uh, to make the whole place slow down, get out of its old industrial character and into something local. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I wanted to, um, uh, just explore some of the, the issues that, um, you raised in the report about particular, uh, hotspots, um, in terms of Inner West Bicycle Coalition. One of the areas you've talked about, um, already, but the cycle crossing at James Craig Road, you know, however many, however many lanes there are there actually, do you know that?
Oh, there's a few lanes. Our point with that thing is that the cyclist is not directed to a nice straight route across. They've got to zigzag a couple of things and it doesn't, it looked like it's all oriented towards motorists or big trucks in particular coming off the Anzac Bridge and turning left.
Three lanes and a slip lane.
Yeah. So we've got a kind of, it's fine. It's legal for us to ride across that. There's, we've got the lights and all that. But we, there, there's a sort of a slip lane as well and it's not a very clear path. And people would be, uh, people in motorists would wonder why these cyclists are veering all over the place. If it was made much clearer, okay, you've got a certain amount of time to get across, but you need to make a nice clear path. That was what our point about that intersection was.
Thank you. And have you heard from?
All as well.
Have you heard from, have you heard from your, uh, members, uh, both the Bicycle New South Wales and, and Inner West about the, whether there's been any safety concerns from them individually about the, the new, you know, since the Rosel interchange opened, about them taking extra risks? We heard this morning, for example, about pedestrians kind of crossing large, uh, sections of road because there's just, they have to walk 10 minutes up, up the road essentially to cross. Have you heard any stories like that?
Well, I know of cases where people still try to cross Victoria Road at Robert Street and there's no pedestrian crossing there.
So this is on bikes now?
Uh, I've seen, uh, don't you worry, those delivery couriers will do anything, but Google tells them. But, um, yes, I've, I've known of cases where people have tried to get across that intersection by bike and it's dangerous because we've got six lanes to deal with. I mean, why there's no pedestrian crossing there is probably a triumph of, uh, network efficiency is what the, um, transport clerk would tell you.
I've seen a kid almost run over at the entrance to Lillifield Road, um, by someone coming off the Anzac Bridge, sweeping around through the lights and then going left. And the kid, uh, there's no pedestrian crossing, no facility for pedestrians or bicyclists to cross. So, uh, two kids were crossing and one almost got cleaned up by a car because that's a high-speed route and there's absolutely no warning or slowing, uh, for cyclists that are going up Victoria Road.
Yeah, if you look at item four, right, it's talking about Quirk Street. There's a bit of footpath there which, um, you shouldn't really encourage anybody to cycle because you could fall off straight into whatever the 60,000 cars a, a day or whatever happens on Victoria Road. So that's, that's very dangerous. Um, we've seen people cycling there and there's tree roots to get over. It's awkward. It's stupid. It must be, um, signposted to, to discourage people. What we're saying is we want everybody to be on the other side of Victoria Road and there will be better linkages. We've got something in common with our lady from the PNC. We want a better crossing of Victoria Road at Darling Street, for instance. All those crossings need to be enhanced so that we could, can get to the north side of Victoria Road and then proceed on into the city.
I also just wanted to, um, just got a few minutes left, um, but you were mentioning the consultation that you had with John Holland, who, um, now was that part of a formal consultation process around the cycling infrastructure that would be provided as a result of Rosel interchange? Or did you approach them to talk to them about what you would like to see?
Well, um, as Peter has alluded to, um, Bicycle New South Wales was mentioned in the EIS. So they were legally required to consult with, uh, Bicycle New South Wales and/or us, who was one of our bicycle user group affiliates. So that, that was initiated by them. But what I'm saying is that the actual process was the usual old stuff that I've been dealing with with motorways for years. They just don't want us in the picture. They don't want us in the picture. We're irrelevant. Well, we're not irrelevant. Actually, there are people that want to get about the local area by bike. And these engineers, they just roll their eyes and they just don't want to know about it.
So I just want to be clear with this. So, so Bicycle New South Wales, so it was, it was very clearly laid out as a condition in the environmental impact statement for Rosel Interchange. Bicycle New South Wales needed to be consulted on changes, I assume, in terms of cycling infrastructure. Potentially there was promises, uh, made that new cycling infrastructure, you'd be accommodated. Was, is that part of it or is there a reason why you were specifically mentioned in that EIS?
That, that's, that's exactly entirely correct. But the, so in, in area, that, and that's why we believe the conditions of consent were not met in a number of areas, including this one. In, in areas, there, there may be legally met, but in the spirit of the, and in the intent of what, why we were included for that consultation, we certainly were not consulted, consulted with effectively or from a two-way basis. The, the other issue that certainly cropped up time after time again was, um, very high staff rotation and role changes within the organisation of, of John Holland, uh, particularly. So you'd, 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 there were, there were meetings and consultations undertaken and then all of a sudden new staff members start from scratch again. And there was, there was no, um, intellectual knowledge there and that hindered the process very significantly.
Thank you. So, so, no, Mr. Fang, sorry. I'm just continuing on this line of questioning. So, um, uh, so the EIS mentioned Bicycle New South Wales. You stood there with a, then a representative from, uh, John Holland. So this was Inner West Bicycle Coalition, for Bicycle New South Wales. I'm assuming you stood there, you told them what was, uh, uh, what needed to be improved, that you didn't support what was essentially part of a bike lane, that traffic then cut through. And they said, well, tough luck. It's going to happen anyway. Was that, is that the consultation that happened?
I guess. I remember, I remember being on the site of, um, Callan and Towell Street, uh, uh, turnoffs of Victoria Road. If you're heading west on Victoria Road, past Darling Street, as you go down towards the Iron Cove Bridges, about two or three streets go into a little bit of Rosel there. And I remember having a huge fight with, with a John Holland person who just didn't want to know about the fact that he thought he'd done a wonderful job at building a slip lane that enabled motorists to whip off Victoria Road at great rate of knots and then just cut straight across what essentially was a shared, uh, bike and pedestrian way. There were no, uh, proper, um, treatments of those slip lanes. We don't like slip lanes anyway. They just cut straight through what we're doing. But basically you could put a raised ramp, a ramp there to make the motorists slow down and at least take a bit of notice of who might have been coming along the cycleway next to them. So that was an, an instance where they just didn't want to know about what we were recommending. What we're recommending is not illegal. It's something that's in the Austroads Guides as to how you deal with that sort of, uh, circumstance.
Was it the final design, design? Did that, that, has that made its way into that stand now?
That, if you look at these pictures I've got, they're in the pictures now.
Okay.
Anyway, it's in there.
That's all right. We could, yeah, you have, um, provided that. Thank.
And also we wanted, um, at, at the corner of Wellington Street and Victoria Road, we wanted the cycleway, the shared path to be declared all the way, um, eastwards up towards Victoria Road, towards Darling Street because that, that is a significant intersection where we can get across both ways to our favoured north side thing, uh, cycleway. And of course, the people didn't see it was, uh, end of works, not in our brief. Don't want to know about it. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you, um, very much. Now we are out of time for.
Chair, I just have one question to ask.
Go ahead, just very quickly.
Mr. Tomkin, are you a Greens donor?
No, no.
Thank you, Mr. Fang. That was your question. It's now.
So what?
Yeah, just because he's a cyclist, uh, doesn't make him a, a Greens member a donor. Thanks, Mr. Fang. I didn't, I didn't realise that this session was revealed.
And if I am a donor of the Greens, Mr. Fang, what is the problem?
That's what's happened. Uh, all right. Thanks, Mr. Fang. We'll look forward to that invitation by the Bicycle, uh, people for the committee to all go out there and, um.
Yes.
We thank you very, very much for your submission and your evidence.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you, thank you. Yeah, thank you very much, thank you, thank you. The committee will now have a break, we'll be back for our public forum, which starts at two forty-five.
Yeah.
Is there any chance we can get it?
Yeah.
So, welcome to this afternoon's public forum for the committee's inquiry into the impact of the Rozelle interchange. For anyone who's recently joined us, my name is Kate Fairman and I am the Chair of this committee. This public forum is an opportunity for the committee to hear directly from community members who have been directly impacted by the opening of the Rozelle interchange. Before we commence, I'd like to make some brief comments about the procedures for today's public forum. Speakers were asked to register in advance for today's forum. Those of you who have been registered to speak will be called up to the lectern in turn. If time allows, at the end of the public forum, however, anyone in the audience who wishes to speak will be invited to do so. You have approximately four minutes to speak to the committee and we will sound a warning bell at the three-minute mark, so you're aware you will need to conclude your comments. A final bell will sound at four minutes and I will tell you that I tend to take my time keeping quite seriously as a Chair, so after at four minutes you will need to wrap up very quickly. What you say today is being transcribed and streamed live to the Parliament's website and will be included as evidence to the inquiry. It's also important that I note again that while all participants are covered by parliamentary privilege, committee hearings and public forums are not intended to provide a forum for people to make adverse reflections about others under the protection of privilege. In that regard, it's important that participants focus on the issues raised by the inquiry terms of reference and avoid naming individuals unnecessarily. Finally, can I sincerely thank those who came along today to speak to the committee. It's important that the committee hears from the people who have been directly impacted by the Rozelle interchange and it will help shape our report and formulate what we hope are really important recommendations to the government. So, I now welcome our first participants and I will call you out in this order. So, we first, we have up Elizabeth Alenius. Elizabeth, if you could please come forward and what I'll get you to do is sit down and then state your name clearly into the microphone and then... Oh, sorry, it's over... Oh, sorry, the lectern, sorry about that. Yes, it says... Oh, it's very official. Very official, okay. Okay, if you could state your name and then you're welcome to begin.
Elizabeth Alenius, Piermont Action.
Thank you very much.
Piermont Action members expressed concerns about the impact on Piermont of the Rozelle interchange as far back as the consultation around 10 years ago. We were advised by Transport that there would be no impact as the Anzac Bridge was already at capacity. No statement was produced on possible traffic impacts in Piermont. Fast forward to 2022, when we were presented with the Western Distributor Improvements Project, which was aimed at reducing the potential for accidents associated with merging lanes on the approach to the city and the Harbour Bridge with the increase in traffic anticipated from the interchange. One could laugh now, in hindsight, when one has to cross four lanes of traffic in the short distance between the interchange and the first off-ramp to Piermont if travelling via Victoria Road. We didn't oppose the proposal to construct a new bypass, which obviates the necessity for the Western Distributor lane changes, but quickly realised that these proposals could have a huge impact on traffic in Piermont. The 501 bus is to be rerouted to the second Allen Street off-ramp on its journey to Central, missing Piermont altogether. The right-hand turn from the lights at the bottom of the Piermont off-ramp into Bank Street is to be removed. All traffic from the Anzac Bridge will be required to proceed south to Piermont Bridge Road. Those travelling from the west who live and work in the north-west corner of Piermont will now have to turn left into Piermont Bridge Road, left again at its intersection with Harris Street, then either proceed down Harris Street or to Bowman Street, or turn into Miller Street to access Bank Street. This will involve four sets of lights and choke already clogged intersections in Piermont Bridge Road and Harris Street. Two reasons are given for this prohibition. One is that an emergency vehicle bay is required near the exit into Bank Street. Two, it will reduce traffic backup to the Anzac Bridge. In fact, it will increase backup as all traffic will proceed to lights at Piermont Bridge Road, whereas now the off-ramp lanes bifurcate vehicles both north and south along Bank Street at the same time. These changes will occur when the current fish markets move to their new home in Piermont Bridge Road. We've sought a site meeting with Transport to discuss alternative sites for the emergency vehicle bay without success. We have sought meetings to work out an alternative bus route to enable passengers to disembark or enter the 501 bus in Piermont without success. We have pointed out that the Black Wattle Bay precinct strategy foreshadows massive development along the Black Wattle Bay foreshore with 36-storey towers on podiums and a plan for a 33-storey residential tower and two 21-storey office buildings behind the foreshore developments. We have already been advised by HIMEX that 120 heavy vehicles a day take the right-hand turn off to reach its concrete batching plant. They will now have to drive through the main shopping precinct in Harris Street, down Miller Street to reach the plant. Absolute silence from Transport. The only feedback we've received is from the Roads Minister, who advises that the detour that we'll all have to make through Piermont is only around 400 metres and would take two minutes. Through four sets of traffic lights? Tell him he's dreaming. We ask the committee to recommend that Transport go back to the drawing board and come up with a new plan that retains the right-hand turn from the Piermont off-ramp and locates the emergency vehicle bay underneath the Western Distributor, which will be vocated by the fish markets for a car park. Any further improvements should be developed in close consultation with community representatives. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Now, we're calling up Mr Keith Stalard and just letting everybody in the forum know that this is an opportunity to hear from, for us to hear from the public and we don't ask questions of those who speak. So, Mr Stalard.
Yeah, good afternoon, Ms Fairman and members of the Inquiry Team. As you said, my name's Keith Stalard and I'm a long-term resident of White Bay in Balmain, which is just next to the Rozelle interchange. I'm speaking here, both as an individual resident and as the public officer of the Rozelle Interchange, sorry, Rozelle Parklands Active Transport and Community Hub. I'm also speaking on behalf of two-thirds of the residents of Rozelle, who in a recent questionnaire by Inner West Council said that they would cycle to the city if the cycling infrastructure was good. I'll start by listing some of the negative impacts on me and other cyclists when in the Lilyfield Road and Victoria Road corridors. Both of these corridors have been defined by Transport for New South Wales as strategic cycleway corridors that should, and I quote Transport for New South Wales, provide safe and convenient cross-city cycleway connections. Indeed, Transport for New South Wales has identified completion of the Lilyfield Road connection as an immediate opportunity, but it hasn't taken advantage of that. To characterise the impacts, I'm going to use the five criteria that Transport for New South Wales developed in its cycleway design toolkit, which says that cycleways should be safe, they should be direct, they should be connected, attractive and comfortable. We agree. However, the active transport infrastructure in Victoria Road and Lilyfield Road is not direct. Removal without providing other convenient options of the two shared path bridges over the City West Link and Victoria Road, near the junction with the City West Link, has forced cyclists and walkers to take less direct and more onerous routes. The active transport routes are often unsafe. The popular shared path along the eastern side of Victoria Road is narrow, poorly surfaced and has many obstacles. There are currently 102 poles in the cycleway in the 1.2 kilometres from the Iron Cove Bridge to the City West Link. Instead of relocating these dangerously placed poles, as Transport for New South Wales' own consultant recommended, West Connects has actually installed some more and this is making it much more dangerous for cyclists. This is one of the problems that has led the organisers of the Biennale in the White Bay Power Station to make the following announcement. The Biennale of Sydney has made the decision to not propose to promote transportation by bicycle due to safety concerns. The designated bike paths are not secure with substantial risks involved. That's the organisers of the Biennale. The active transport routes are not conveniently connected. The removal of the two bridges I just mentioned have made particularly difficult for cyclists living in Balmain. Routes are often not attractive, the routes are rarely comfortable. The moody street to Rozelle Parklands route, sometimes suggested as an alternative to Victoria Road, includes steep hills and requires negotiating nine road junctions, one with traffic lights and six changes in direction in one kilometre. In short, much of the active transport infrastructure is inappropriate and not fit for purpose. This is not as promised and is a result of failure of the planning process or perhaps even abuse of it. Commitments made in the environmental impact statement and formalised in the Department of Planning's conditions of approval were progressively eroded. The urban design and landscape plan often ignored government policies, shuts is the active transport strategy. The designs adopted do not comply with the guidelines and standards of the federal government nor of Transport for New South Wales. Consultation was undertaken but was ineffective and lacked an empathetic approach. The advice of Bicycle New South Wales, as we've heard, and local walkers and cyclists was not seriously considered. So, what's the solution? Solution may be easier than for cars. Those responsible, senior managers of Transport for New South Wales and the Department of Planning need to ensure that the active transport elements of the Rozelle interchange are brought into compliance with the legally binding conditions of approval and all applicable policies, guidelines and standards.
Thank you, Mr Stalard. Honestly, to hear from everybody, I have to be strict, but...
That's fair enough.
Thank you. If you want, you could always submit your written speech as well.
I'll do so.
Thank you, if you could table that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms Marguerite Young?
Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak today. I've been involved in this process since 2017. Where do I start? I'm here mostly representing my street and how I've been affected has also affected most of my neighbours. They have small children, they work, they're unable to attend unfortunately. I'm fifth-generation Australian to live in Anandar, Rozelle, Balmain area, going back to convicts, so I know the area pretty well. I bought my house in 1977 in Pritchard Street. If that's the City West Link, Pritchard Street is above it, there's Roway Parade going below and Pritchard Street is above. I'm on the side of a hill and there's a hill behind me. So, any noise from City West Link just comes straight up. I'm also opposite the Pigtail Bridge and the M4 tunnel entrance and exits where there's traffic lights. Over the years, like I put up with all the construction, there was a lot of construction, with the Pigtail Bridge, a neighbour from Lilyfield, one from Roway Parade and myself, we formed a team and for years and years we tried to get information about the Pigtail Bridge. I have one of the fact sheets from 2017, it's a lovely line going through bushland and we had no idea what it was going to be. We had lots of meetings. I became very well-acquainted with the team, West Connects, John Holland team, and I've coined a new term and that's a wall of empathy and that's dealing with bureaucracy. You can use it if you want, I'm going to tell them a query dictionary. It's when people empathise with you and they might say they'll talk to someone but nothing happens. And in fact, I've often been telling people I'm meant to be getting advice from, information about certain things. I'm going to mainly talk about the Pigtail Bridge. It took two years, it's over-engineered, I'm a cyclist myself, it didn't need to be done like that, but I did get a green, the Green Verge planted up. That took work with council, with Transport and John Holland, but we had that built and it took two years and that's growing up now. So, that's one of the issues slightly solved, but it took the community to do that. Then, finally it opened and I was in and out on holidays, but I was home one day and there was this incredible noise, it was like an aeroplane taking off and it kept going. And then it was on and off and it took three weeks of EPA, Transport, West Connects, everybody to get answers and over six weeks I finally got the fan noise turned down with the help of Kobi, who went directly to the minister. But the fans in the tunnel, the noise is only controlled by fan speed. There should be noise attenuation, it was never done. It's been done in the M, sorry, the M, I'm sorry, I'm normal modelled up with my, it's the M8 that I'm dealing with. The M4 East actually has noise attenuation, this one does not. Now, with the traffic lights, I went away, I came home, I'd been staying in cheap hotels in Montevideo and Buenos Aires, I came home and the noise from the trucks was incredible, it was worse than anything I stayed in overseas in those places. The trucks come, they all stop at the lights for the M8 tunnel and when they take off and they enter and leave and all the traffic has to stop. When they take off from their brakes, it's incredible. The motorcycles, the emergency traffic has to slow down as well. The wall is really old, it hasn't been fixed for a long time, it's way lower than any other wall. We have photographs of all the walls, it's inappropriate, there's no noise attenuation and we get it directly.
Thank you so much, Ms Young. I'm sorry to cut you off, I know you had so much more to tell us. Thank you. Do we have Ms Cassie Plate here? No. Mr William Atkins, and I will say at this point, if the hour isn't up and there are some people who started speaking and wish to take a little bit more time and if we do have them, you're very welcome to come up and finish some of your contribution. Mr Atkins?
Hello and thank you to the committee for this opportunity to contribute.
Scrubbed out, he's not here. I've got, just trust me as Chair please, Mr De Adam, that would be great. Go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Will Atkins. I've lived in Balmain for 20 years and pass through the area around the Rozelle interchange almost daily in various ways on public transport, walking or driving a car. So, I want to focus on the impact and remedies around community connections with our streets, parks and public transport routes. I see and experience the traffic mess around the Rozelle interchange, but we have to be careful that the understandable outcry around car and traffic dysfunction doesn't bind us to yet more community-harming road development. The principles of the New South Wales Government Active Transport strategy seem to have been overlooked in the Rozelle Parklands development. It's a barrier to the proposed Sydney CBD to Parramatta foreshore walk. It runs counter to the 15-minute cities principles, which moves us away from car-based connections. So, my suggestions to remedy the current outcome include to use the Bays West Precinct project to fix some of the harmful effects of the Rozelle interchange. It's right next door and it overlaps geographically with some of the community damage from West Connects. So, having engaged as a member of the public with the West Connects and the current Bays West Community Consultation, I'm concerned that exactly the same types of failures could occur again and there could be the same mistakes, but community inputs, because community inputs are not being taken seriously. But if done well, the positive steps that could be taken within the scope of the Bays West project are these. To reconnect the White Bay Power Station area to the Black Wattle Bay Rozelle Bay foreshore for walkers and bikes. There used to be the overhead ramp, which was discussed early with Bikes New South Wales, the Beatrice Bush Bridge, and that was demolished to make way for the West Connects extension. Now, it's a 15-minute, at least, foot journey around multiple road crossings, ramps and stairways. Next is to calm and slow down traffic entering Rozelle from Anzac Bridge, especially vehicles heading down Roberts Street, Rozelle, past the White Bay Power Station and I think also the Lilyfield Road. These are just metres from the Rozelle Parklands, like literally a stone's throw and they have been trashed in the construction and not fixed up and we're just left with the detritus around Rozelle Parklands. The area outside the White Bay Power Station on Roberts Street is a 40 kilometre an hour zone, but it's traffic anarchy and it's highly dangerous to pedestrians. The Sydney Biennale is on there right now, we heard today, and it's brilliant, but Roberts Street outside looks like it's prepared for a riot with temporary fencing and absurd lengthy pedestrian diversions, hundreds of metres up the road. It was wrecked during the development of the interchange and just left. It's supposed to be a landmark development site, including a new metro station and waterfront parks. Set the tone now with street softening and transport routes and that would be a tangible community dividend. Public transport interchange, 442, 441 bus services, 501 to 510 bus services, Rozelle Light Rail, Bays Metro at the White Bay Power Station are all clustered in the same area and are an ideal intermodal interchange. As a crow flies, they're just a few hundred metres apart, but the interchange, the Rozelle interchange has created like a Berlin Wall of barriers between all of these modes of transport and rendered them ineffective. Focus on those connectivities. Reinstate the Glebe Island Bridge as a walking and cycling route between Piermont and Rozelle. Anzac Bridge is not optimal. Reclaim Victoria Road Rozelle for the local community, now that its role as a channel between Anzac and Gladesville Bridges has been superseded by a toll-free tunnel. I meant, you mentioned it was a ghost road this morning. It is 18 hours a day, there's no one on it. So, this surge traffic situation is robbing us of a great opportunity and I will conclude there. Thanks very much, everyone.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr Atkins. Now, I believe the next person here is Mr Ben Prague. Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to thank you, the committee, for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'd like to address, well, I'd like to talk to reference term D of the inquiry, which is the interchange's impact on public transport. Firstly though, if the members of the inquiry will indulge me, I'd like to read a few quotes from one of my favourite websites. It's called the New South Wales Government Future Transport Strategy. "Transport for New South Wales will continue to shift its focus from moving vehicles to moving people. We're carrying on reshaping our transport networks from a collection of disparate modes into an integrated and multimodal system. All public transport modes contribute to delivering 30-minute cities, which reduce private vehicle use and increase sustainable transport use. We'll break down the barriers that prevent people using public transport by refreshing terminals and interchanges to reduce connection times." And finally, this is my personal favourite, "We're planning to make our cities more sustainable and livable by reducing traffic congestion." That's, so those are all real quotes, by the way. You can check them out, transport.nwsales.gov.au for yourself. "It doesn't take a genius or even a qualified transport planner to understand that building more roads specifically designed to carry private cars into the CBD was doomed to failure, or that creating a bottleneck where 12 lanes merge into four on the Anzac Bridge was going to create traffic chaos. It is, however, particularly galling that the biggest losers from the debacle that is West Connects and in particular the Rozelle interchange are the very people that the government claims that they want to encourage, the people who are trying to do the right thing by using public transport. One of the worst aspects of the interchange, and there are many to choose from, is the fact that the three lanes on Victoria Road are merged into one lane on the Anzac Bridge within about 50 metres. I don't have this written down because it happened this morning after I wrote the speech, but the bus I took in this morning had to brake suddenly because it was trying to merge in with everything else and I was standing up, there were plenty of old people on the bus and so there's going to be a serious accident there, somebody's going to get hurt, it's an absolute disgrace. So, anyway, this causes a big choke point and has a ripple effect back along Victoria Road. The other two main arterial roads, being the City West Link and the West Connects itself, are impacted as well, but the merges are longer and they're more generous. They've been given a better shake of the sauce bottle, as Kevin Rowde would say. Somebody actually prepared a diagram, I don't know if we can see that here, probably not so good. It kind of makes it pretty clear what's going on there. You know, you've got 12, depending on how many you count them, 12, 14 lanes going into four, it's never going to work.
You can table that document as well for us at the end.
I'd like to, yeah, yeah. Fact-check it first maybe. Where was I? So, anyway, my main point is the volume, is, main point is the volume of public transport users on each of the main three roads that merge into the bridge. So, let's have a look at West Connects M4, first of all. Zero bus services and I think pretty unlikely to ever have a bus service considering it's a private toll road. City West Link, one west route and if you look at Victoria Road, 10 bus routes. and if you look at Victoria Road, 10 bus routes, probably carrying, I don't know, tens of thousands of people in the morning peak. These are the people that are getting completely messed around by the government. How can the government in any way justify prioritising single occupancy car use over mass transport users when the planning, when planning any major transport project? I consider myself to be practical and pragmatic person, and I recognise that cars have their place in the transport mix, but if anything comes out of this inquiry, surely must be to call for an immediate moratorium on new roads, public or private, that encourage private vehicles to drive into or through the city. Let's stay consistent to the government's own strategy and spend the money on what other modern cities have learnt and we should already know. Reliable and affordable public transport is the only solution that should be made, should be on the table from now on. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thanks, Mr Prag. Now, we have Ms Loretta Piccone, did I say that correctly? No. All right, we'll move on to Mr Richard Hughes.
Good afternoon. Richard Hughes, resident of Balmain East.
You could just state your name at the beginning, please.
Richard Hughes, resident of Balmain East.
Oh, sorry.
So I don't have anything prepared. I had three points I want to make, but that's expanded to five on listening to some feedback. First is communication, originally of the changes of the Rozell interchange. I was signed up and reasonably well informed, but other people driving along Victoria Road, I used to go up to Hunter's Hill for dog training on a Monday morning, it was clear when it was opened that the communication was poor. Poor is an understatement. Signage.
Mr Hughes, could you just step forward?
I've not been picked up, sorry.
Just step forward a little bit, so you're, thank you.
Signage, signage is dreadful. I think it's just dreadful throughout New South Wales, but if you go over the Anzac Bridge heading west, it tells you to be in the right-hand two lanes to go to the airport, there's an airport sign. You get to the final signpost just before the Victoria Road, City West Link, whatever it's called, is no airport sign. So do you go right onto Victoria Road or do you go straight left onto City West Link? There's no sign. And that's just one example of a litany that I could list of poor signage on the roads, but specifically linked to the supposed improvement of the project. Third one is testing, simulation, measurement of project success. I work in the private sector, we measure the success of projects. Like, I don't know, you've had years of data to collect to measure average traffic time from Iron Cove Bridge to Anzac Bridge, days of AMPR, you could easily track cars to see how long it took them, and instantly we could have got a measure of success of the project, but it just seems lacking. Two other points, one of the previous speakers mentioned that if you come from Victoria Road and you want to go left on to the Fish Market exit over Anzac Bridge, getting across that from lane four to lane one in the morning, I drive my wife to Harris Street most mornings, it's dangerous, it's an accident waiting to happen. And the fourth, my final point, just very quickly, about the integrated transport policy. I have a dog, many, and apologies if this is outside the scope of the committee's terms of reference, but like, what's the point of having a commitment to letting people use public transport when the majority, when almost everyone is predicated, cannot use their, take their dogs on ferries, on buses, on trains, and so you are forcing those people to use cars to make the traffic situation worse in one of the busiest intersections in the world. I mean, I live two or three minutes from Balmain East Wharf. Yeah, I'm lucky, my dog's only nine kilograms, I'm fit and able-bodied, I can carry him in one of the closed crates, but most people can't. And therefore, you're committing people, if they want to go out in their dog, not using public transport, they have to use cars. It's just a farce. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr Hughes. Now we have JP Alexander.
JP Alexander from the Friends of Ultimo. Sorry, we didn't intend, intended to speak, so I've no, nothing ready. Just two points. The situation we are in wasn't entirely predictable, but was also solely predicted, and we all remember the numerous submissions we made, the forum we attended, the rallies we went to a decade ago, so that was predicted. The second point is that Ultimo is not directly implicated in the, or affected by the Rozell Interchange, but is affected nonetheless. When you attract so many cars in a taller highway, they have to get out somewhere. And Transport for New South Wales has organised two exits in our peninsula, bringing more cars, bringing more cars, and this is absolutely contrary to the Piermont Peninsula Place Strategy, which is the own government rule, which was, which promised less cars, more transport, more active transport, and we get more cars. Harry Street, which is now fed with cars from Allen Street exit, was promised to be a boulevard with three-lane footpath, et cetera. And so that was our point. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, JP. Now, that's the list of, that's the end of the list of the people who have registered to speak. I did just want to then just check whether there's anybody else here who hasn't registered, who does wish to have a, make a contribution.
I think there's one.
Okay, the lady at the back. Come on down, and you'll have to state your, your name.
Hello, hi. My name is Moira Sheen. I didn't actually register to speak.
That's okay.
And I agree with everything that people have said because the, it's been a disaster, to be quite frank. The thing I wanted to mention is, I was on the stakeholder group, who were being consulted right through the process, I'm going back a decade now, with the various groups, including at the end John Holland, the contractor. And we made various suggestions, people both in Anandale, I'm on the Anandale side, and people on the Lilyfield Rozell side as well. We made suggestions about things that could be done to mitigate the potential traffic that was going to come through. Do you know what the problem was? Each of those suggestions would have had to come from the budget, the government's budget. And guess what? The funding for the Rozell Interchange, for the West Connect comes from T Corp, which is an organised, a corporation that is only to make money, and is only available to the executive arm of the government, which is the government that is in power at the day. So it's not the current government who made all these decisions. But again, each of the bureaucrats said, yes, that's a good idea, because there were planners there, people who understood transport, and local people who also understood. But every time they went back, they were told, no, sorry, we don't have any money in the budget. So I think that's a critical issue, is what that T Corp money is used for, because the only purpose for that West Connects was to make money. It was nothing about the public good. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms Sheen. Is there anybody else in the audience today who hasn't made a contribution firstly, and who wishes to? No, at this point, I did just want to check then. Ms Young, I interrupted you, you hadn't quite finished. Did you wish to make a, just for a minute or two, because I felt like you did have something further to contribute? You don't necessarily have to, I'm giving you the opportunity if you do wish to though. And also, Mr Stalard, I think I interrupted you as well. Did you want to, maybe another two minutes for these two, if they wish, if members are okay?
I read, I read the terms of reference, and it did state about communications. And I found the communications during the construction phase just absolutely totally inadequate. As I said, the wall of empathy with no information and stopped. And I must tell you, I was part of the No West Connects Anandale and also the Foreshore Group. The Foreshore Group had direct contact with the minister, I think that was political, and the Anandale No West Connects got absolutely no shift at all. And they did put in incredible submissions stating, no with the traffic, they actually had engineers do a whole lot of modelling, they put in lots of modelling, and it was totally ignored. Since, I must say, since the opening, it's been a lot better with communications. I felt I have been heard. I have a direct line now to Transurban, whether or not, again, it's someone who's not higher up, but I think there's someone higher up looking down. So I feel that, yeah, according to communication, because that was one of the terms of reference, to see how that went. But it is actually impacting my neighbours incredibly. One is seriously thinking of leaving, and they've been in their house for at least 15 years. And the other one is desperately trying to do, you know, plant things, and they're supporting me being here today because they want to be taken out in a box like me, but we're really, it's not acceptable. And I've put up with the shunting, when I bought my house, I had the shunting, I've now got the planes, I've got everything. But the noise of the fans, I never knew it was going to come, when it was going to come on, and I've been told by acoustic engineers that that is the worst possible sound. It's a low humming, and you don't only hear it, you feel it. And I'm terrified, without proper noise attenuation, they're going to put the fans up as soon as there's more, more pollution. And the, also the, it's just shocking, the walls, the walls are terrible, you know, if you have a look. And we've, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Mr Stalard, did you wish to complete your contribution as well?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to do that. I only had a little bit left, so it'll be less than two minutes.
Thank you.
But it's good news, because what I want to say is, I was talking about the problems for active transport, but there are solutions which you asked to hear about. And I think the solution for active transport is actually easier than the solution for cars. The cost would probably be lost in the margin of error of the estimates of costs for West Connects. This, West Connects? Rozell Interchange. What needs to be done is that the senior managers of Transport for New South Wales and the Department of Planning need to ensure that the active transport that they promised to deliver is delivered according to the conditions of approval, because they're not at the moment. And that will encourage mode shift from private cars to active transport, and that should, that will bring benefits not only to the cyclists and walkers, but also to the larger community. It'll bring environmental, it'll bring social and health benefits. And with a little bit of luck, it might slightly reduce the congestion at the Rozell Interchange. So I'd just like to, I think there's been a bit of confusion with the documents, together with the people that spoke earlier, that's the, the transport, I'm getting all my friends mixed up, the Ino S Bicycle Coalition and Bicycle New South Wales, we developed this document called Rozell Interchange Active Transport Non-Compliance and Defects Report. It took us several weeks to do it and a lot of research. There may be a few errors, but I think we got it mostly right. Could we encourage the inquiry, please, to read this and take it seriously? Thank you very, oh, by the way, I've invited Howard Collins to come cycling with us along the, along the active transport corridors. He hasn't replied yet, but he has admitted that he's a keen cyclist. If any people on the, on your panel would like to join us, we'd be only too pleased.
Yeah, I'll take you up on that, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Yeah, if we could table the report, we do have it, but, oh my goodness. Sorry, Mr Stalard, that was. But maybe that's a message when the lights go on at the end of a night, that we may be finished, but I did just want to check whether there was anybody else that, yes?
Can I add one more point?
Yes, you can add one more point, then I.
Richard Hughes, still a resident of Balmain East. Yeah, one final point I forgot to raise, sorry, and Kobe I know has raised this on many occasions, which is the filtration of the smokestacks. You know, I think it's absolutely abhorrent in the 21st century, I think we're in the 21st century, nearly quarter way through, that we get a mixed message. We're told to close our windows and turn on recycled cycling as we go in, recycled air, as we go into the tunnels, and yet they're telling us that the stuff that comes out the chimneys is safe. So which is it? Do we, should we turn on the recycling and close your windows because it's safe or, because it's not safe, or do we believe the evidence? And it's just the next scientific disaster that we're locking in for future generations? I don't know. I hope not.
Thank you. Thanks very much, Mr.
But the solution is simple. We toll cars for using the tunnels, have a pollution toll. They've done it in London, they've done it in all other cities, you know, don't charge EVs, charge, charge, and it's still, again, outside the scope of your inquiry, I'm sorry, but it appalls me that there are no emission standards in Australia for cars. And like, the cars that emit the most should pay more and have, and we should be filtering the smokestacks, because it's just, I find it abhorrent.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Hughes. Now, you're in the front row, you've got your hand up. Yeah, absolutely miscellaneous, isn't it? Yep, Elizabeth.
Elizabeth Aleniaus. I had a, an incident the other day where I had to go to the White Bay Terminal, and I know that Ports likes everybody to take James Craig Drive. So I set off from Piermont in the left-hand lane, expecting to be able to turn, as I used to do, into James Craig Road. I looked at all the signs, no, no turnoff, so I ended up in Drumoin and had to chuck a ewe and come back down Victoria Road, which, of course, added to congestion. But there was no sign early in my journey onto the Anzac Bridge to tell me that I had to get into a particular lane to access James Craig Drive. Now, all passengers either leaving or going on, going onto the ships in White Bay Terminal, they are required to use James Craig Road. And I'm wondering, you know, there's been a big increase in people using Roberts Street, who are probably doing the same thing I'm doing and having to detour via Drumoin to get there. So if you could add that to things that need to be fixed, and urgently, I mean, that's just a sign. Just get it done. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Elizabeth. Okay, I think we have exhausted the contributions from those present. So thank you so much. Yes, thank you so much for attending today, and thanks very much for your contributions. They were incredibly valuable for us. That is the end of our forum today. It's the end of our public hearing. It's not the end of this inquiry, however. We do have another couple of days in a couple of weeks where we get to ask questions of other witnesses, hopefully including the government. So thank you very much. That's the end of today's hearing.